Good evening and welcome to the January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four Litchfield School Board meeting. I would like to call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, where we stand under God, indivisible, with a belief in justice for all.
Excellent. Um, let's see, are there any review and revisions to the agenda for tonight?
There are not. The only thing I would point out is that under new business is, hang on one second, the Campbell High School Program of Studies. So, the board may want to consider moving that earlier so that our principal and school counseling director can get home tonight.
Yes, why don't we plan to slide that after the GMS Griffin Memorial Presentation? Is that okay with the rest of the board?
Perfect.
Okay. Um, for the consent agenda, uh, for board members, are there any committee reports that you want to discuss in more detail or add to old business for tonight?
I apologize for not updating the facilities committee report. Um, I have it here, but I will input that and get everybody up to date.
I think most of us watched it. To be perfectly honest, I watched it, so.
That's even better.
Um, alright, so hearing nothing that needs to be moved, none of the committee reports that need to be moved, we'll move into a summary of non-public actions from January third, twenty twenty-four. I'm gonna fix that typo on the agenda. Ms. Ames made a motion to approve the December twenty-first, twenty twenty-three non-public session minutes. Ms. Harrison seconded the motion and the motion passed five zero zero. We'll move into presentations and recognitions tonight. Tonight, I am wearing my GMS sweatshirt in support of the fact that we have GMS presentation tonight, so I'm gonna ask Principal Mitchell to come on up to, um, it's not a podium, but come on up.
Table.
The table and, um.
Dazed, are you guys on a daze? Price is Right, you gotta say, "Come on down."
I know, I was thinking that. It doesn't sound right, but anyway, so welcome.
Thank you.
And turn it over to you.
Excellent, we just have a few updates of things happening, um, right now and a few things, uh, coming up. First off, you see at the top, the enrollment report, which shows that, yes, GMS is busting at the seams. We're at the four hundred and fifty students, um, all said and done. So, um, it, at, during the summer, we do the data presentation, which talks about the assessments, and so I wanted to, um, just highlight that right now, we have our mid-year i-ready assessments. Um, these again are another kind of a dipstick in the mid-year, see where they are with progress. Um, it is a rather large window, so if parents are watching, it is very kind of grade-dependent. So, for instance, um, third and fourth kind of wanted to do it right at the early window, so they're kind of doing it currently, and that's kind of wrapping up, whereas some of the lower grades are gonna wait a little bit, and so it doesn't line up perfectly, um, with report cards, but parents will, will be notified by their teacher and know that they'll get the report of their mid-year progress, um, um, soon after, after they take them, because the, the results are, are ready instantly. We have two things that are coming up before I present again that I wanted to bring up. One is that they've made a change to the SAS this year, and they have separated the writing portion out. Um, it usually was part of the ELA and it just kind of rolled right into it, and the state has made a decision to switch from AI grading of the writing to, um, human graded. So, it's gonna be, I, I still haven't got confirmation if it's gonna be paper and pencil, if it's gonna be, still be computer-based, but it's gonna be human scored, so the state's gonna take more time, and so the students in third and fourth grade will take the writing separately in a small, two-week window in March, so that'll happen. Another thing is that in a few weeks, our fourth graders will take part in the NATE, which is the National Assessment of Educational Progress, which is, um, if you've ever seen the report of the nation's report card, um, the nation's report card comes from NATE. So, um, a selection of our fourth-grade students will take that, um, on, I believe, January, on January twenty-ninth. Um, so that's just a select number. All fourth-grade parents got an email last week, um, in regards to that. That is not a assessment that we get results for, um, so if the student takes it, we don't actually find out how individual students do. In ter, in, in my years, I've never even seen how the school does. It just goes in and it's reported how New Hampshire does. It's a sample of New Hampshire students that will report on how New Hampshire does, um, in regards to the rest of the country. Um, next week, we start our Great Kindness Challenge Week, which is a, a week that's focused on kindness as well as kind of a spirit activity type thing, so each theme has a, each day has a theme. So, on Monday, it's gonna be be a rainbow in someone else's cloud, so it'll be a color day, and each grade is assigned a color. Tuesday is Team Up for Kindness, so obviously wear your favorite sports team. Wednesday, you get to bring your favorite stuffy, because it's, you've got a friend in me day. Thursday is gonna be my favorite day, because it's walking someone's shoes, so I get to dress as a kid and the kids get to dress like us. Um, so shorts and leggings and a sweatshirt for me. Uh, Friday.
Gonna need a photo.
Um, dream a kind, dream of a kind world, so it's a PJ day. Also, on January thirtieth, we have our annual Math and Literacy Night. This is a night that is funded and required through Title I, but it's open to all families. Uh, we like to do it in, in the winter, because it's actually kind of a, a nice event to break the doldrums of, of the dark winter. So, come on out and play some math and literacy games, and parents usually, um, report that it's, it's fun to play, because the kids will always either ask to play these games at home or tell them about the school, so they actually get to come out and, and play some of those math and reading games, um, that we do. And finally, and they should be coming in soon, but, um, since the beginning of the year, I believe the number is ninety-six. Ninety-six GMS students have been practicing feverishly for, uh, a performance of Finding Nemo Junior, and those present, those, um, performances will be on February second and February third, over at the CHS Auditorium. We have added a third show, so there'll be one on Friday and two on Saturday. And since the SAG-AFTRA strike ended, um, earlier this season, our performers are allowed to promote, um, their product, and so I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Courtney McGoon, who took on the task of directing ninety-six elementary students to put on performance. So, we have a couple of samples for you this evening, so I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. McGoon and her festians.
Hello. Um, with me tonight, I have, um, three, there's actually technically four cast members here. We have one hiding in the audience as well. But we have three of our cast members here, so we have Hayden Moore Miller, who's in fourth grade. He plays Marlin, so if you haven't seen the movie or you're not familiar with the show, Nemo's dad, but we quickly find out that even though it's called Finding Nemo, Marlin is kind of the star of the show, no offense Ava, but. Marlin has a lot of lines, a lot of songs. Hayden has been killing it. I can't wait to see him, and I'm sad to see some of these fourth graders go to middle school next year, definitely. Uh, we also have Ava Willett, who is also a fourth grader. She is one of our three Nemos. Uh, we did take the Nemo role and the Dory role and a couple other roles, and we kind of split them amongst some kids, based on how much music and lines, um, and when you have ninety-six kids audition for a show, you kind of have to do that, or else we'd have a lot of seagulls and, you know, we can't. We already do have a lot of seagulls and sharks and turtles and all the things, but. And then we also have Quinn Byrne with us, who is also one of our Doris, um, and then her brother Luke is actually hiding in the audience, but he is our gil, um, who's kind of like the leader of the fish tank gang. So, if you're not familiar with the show, Finding Nemo basically follows the story of Nemo and Marlin, as Nemo tries to find his dad, and Marlin tries to go through this entire ocean to basically find his child, who has been kidnapped by a sea diver, and they're not really sure what's gonna happen. Um, so we're gonna do a quick little excerpt for you guys, we're gonna do two quick little excerpts, if you don't mind. Uh, we're gonna start with Ava, who is going to sing our scene, so at this point, Nemo's been abducted, if you will, by this sea diver, and Nemo ends up in this tank and basically has like no idea where he is. So, we're gonna start you with a song called Where's My Dad? So Ava, come on up.
So the microphones can hear you, Ava.
You can stand right by me. I'll hide behind them, so you can watch me. Dad? Dad? Where's my dad? I'm all alone. I'm too small to be here on my own. I swam away, 'cause I got mad, but now I really need him. Where's my dad? I love it.
I have goosebumps.
When I heard, I, I don't know how I got so fortunate, because there were, I was, I don't know if any of you have ever had to cast a show before, I know.
You made Ms. Nelson cry.
He cried too.
Casting a show is such a feat as it is, and so there were a few kids that just came in, and I didn't even have to like, you know, you have to listen to everybody, but there were just some that like, it was just, like, our leads are just so clear. I can't wait to see what happens when they get to high school, because, oh, we're in trouble, I'm really, I already told them that they're not allowed to leave theater now that they're in. Some of them are like, I might retire after four. I was like, no, I'm gonna turn. Um, so we're gonna follow up, yeah, no retiring. Um, we're gonna follow that with a scene, um, where Hayden and Quinn, um, Marlin's kind of at the point right now, where he's like, you know what, I'm not going to, you know, I don't know what's gonna happen, like, I'm never gonna find Nemo, and this is Dory's scene, where Dory's like, hey, and I think you guys might know what's gonna come, but just keep swimming. So, we're gonna do a little fun scene with Quinn and Hayden, whenever they're ready, come on up.
It's close enough so the mic can hear you guys.
Yeah, absolutely, and you can do your, uh, they've got a little choreo that they might show you too, so. I'm gonna put the thing here and then I will, uh. Oh, sorry, let's start your, let's start your lines first. Go ahead Hayden.
I can't believe we lost the mask.
The mask?
Yes, the diver's mask. That mask is the only chance I had of finding my kid.
Tiva?
Nemo. It's Nemo, and I may never see Nemo again.
Hey, Mr. Grumpy Gilz, life's full of little spills. Don't throw your friends up in disgust. Oh, what's the use of floating there, not going anywhere? Swish your tail and dive on in and trust. That's it. Just keep swimming, just keep swimming. Life isn't all that grand. Just keep swimming, just keep swimming. What do we do?
We swim.
Right!
No singing, no singing plays. Now that song is going to be stuck in my head.
Look, there's a shiny thing. Hey, that's a shiny thing.
Please, Dory, try to stay on task.
Pete Sherman, I can read.
Dory, you can read. Wait, that's the mask.
Yeah, I can read.
Yeah, now I can, you don't know how to get there.
But. Just keep swimming, just keep swimming. I can see the account, see? Just keep swimming. Tell him children of the country's bread. Oh, sometimes things look bad. Then poo, the moment is gone. And what do we do?
We just keep swimming on.
To Pete Sherman, forty-two, wallaby, where's Sydney? I remember it said. Pete Sherman, forty-two, wallaby, where's Sydney?
Pete, where, where is that?
I don't know, but who cares? I remembered it again. Pete Sherman, forty-two, wallaby, where's Sydney? Pete Sherman, forty-two, wallaby, where's Sydney?
Stop!
So, just a quick little tidbit, um, so you can see some of our talented actors and actresses. We are, we did add a third show, as crazy as it makes us. Um, I actually have not been home yet, because we were just selling tickets right after school, uh, as much as I appreciated the snow day yesterday. It did throw off our ticket sales that we were gonna do yesterday, so we're jamming it in today, and, uh, we had some lovely adults, including my own mother, who is at the school right now, selling tickets, um, and kind of getting those done, so we did add a third show. Um, right now, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, we're currently just selling to parents as a cast of ninety-six, um, but then next week, we will open sales to general public and staff and all that stuff, so we hope you can join us. We also do have the permissions to livestream one of our shows, um, so we will be livestreaming, so if you're somebody that doesn't feel like getting tickets, or you wanna watch it from the comfort of your own couch, um, we'll release some more livestream information about that as well, so thank you guys so much.
And just as a shout-out too, it's, it's been a true team effort, because I, um, obviously Ms. McGoon has been directing it, but, um, Kristen Stewart, our teacher, has taken the lead on set design as well as costuming, um, and Mrs. Gerson has been helping. Mrs. Stewart said, um, we gotta talk before next year, because costuming ninety-six kids and, you know, I, I think she said, I don't think I knew that Courtney was gonna intend for them to have costume changes, too, so, but it's, it is, it is all coming together. Tech Week is two weeks away.
Yeah, yeah, we have rehearsals next Monday and Wednesday, full cast again, and then, yep, and then we have Tech Week, and we're doing a staff show for some staff on Thursday night, so, but kids are, kids are rocking and rolling.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Awesome, thank you.
We're gonna have dinner now.
With that, any questions?
Questions?
That was incredible. Yeah, it's been a long time since I cried in a school porn meeting.
For good reasons?
That's, that's the kind of crying I like to do.
Good crush.
For a good thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell, and as we said at the beginning, we are gonna go have and have Mr. Hess and Ms. Nelson come on up, we're gonna move up the, uh, Program of Studies discussion, um, so our.
I moved it up on the agenda, so.
Oh, perfect, I'm down looking for it, so, okay.
I moved it.
Perfect.
Ms. Nelson's gonna sing.
She is not. So you all got the draft Program of Studies, along with the change sheet, thanks for pointing out that I had this year on there.
I just wanted to double-check to make sure it was the right year.
That was definitely, my bad. Um, general highlights, I had to reformat the entire Program of Studies, um, because the previous formatting was done in a strange mode that I couldn't replicate, and last year we didn't add any new classes, so I didn't have to replicate last year. This year, we added a bunch of approved, new approved courses, so I had to then try to duplicate the formatting, and it would not work. I even pulled in people that are really, really good with formatting, and it, they came to me and said, "It's not gonna happen, so you need to, you need to redo it," and I said, "Okay." So, that's been all done, dates have been updated, I mean, you have the change sheet, we added in all the new courses that were already approved through Park and through you folks, um, I don't know if anyone has questions?
We had a, any new language that went into the student handbook, we copied and pasted over to the Program of Studies. Uh, I put a new letter in, like, every year, I wanted this one to reflect a little bit more our values and mission statement, so I made sure to do that, um, and then just, you know, the little tweakings here and there of, um, you know, changing the Alvern CTE offerings, um, you know, and making sure that we have, we have all of our new approved courses in there.
Mm-hmm. I made sure that the CTE courses match what Alvern is calling them, because they were a little bit different, so I had both their Program of Studies pulled up to make sure that language was correct.
Any questions from the board?
I have a general question, um, for CTE courses. When do they need to let you know that they're interested?
So they have, um, so Alvern has an open house coming up on January thirty-first, um, that I've been blasting out to families, go, check it out. Um, Alvern is our primary site, so that's the site that we focus on first. Um, both applications, Pinkerton's application is live, so we've been getting that out if students have interest, there's only a specific set of programs that are available to our, for Pinkerton, for the Campbell students, um, so students really need to come talk to us if the ones that are listed are ones that they're interested in, um, because even if that, I mean, it doesn't necessarily mean they'll get accepted to it, they still have to go through the application process, and primary seats in those programs go to their area students first. Um, but Alvern's, um, we're, Jeff Parsons is actually going tomorrow to their counselor, um, open house, so after tomorrow, I'm sure we'll get more details about when their due dates are and stuff like that. So, we're starting to roll out our scheduling for when we're going into classrooms to do classroom presentations, um, we like to have everything buttoned up bef, before February vacation, but sometimes the CTE application has, is more variable, so, yep.
We haven't missed it.
Yeah, we're starting to get all that information now. Good question.
Any other board questions?
Just a quick procedural thing, so, uh, the high school finished this up, got it in front of the, um, in, in front of me and Mary. I asked Mary to go through it and to make sure that all the courses that had gone through the right process and so forth, and they had, of course, so, uh, as soon as we had verified that that was accurate, then we put it on the agenda. Even though it's in front of you tonight, we really can wait one more meeting for a vote if, if, if you wish, um, I think Val would prefer that you vote on it tonight, but historically, the board has taken two meetings, so, um, whichever you, whichever you wish on it.
I'm comfortable with voting, personally, I'm comfortable with voting on it tonight, because it was sent to us well in advance, so I feel like I had time with it, um, so I'm comfortable, but is there anyone on the board that does not feel they had enough time or wants more time?
I will say, the only thing I do still have to update are the page numbers on the Table of Contacts page, but I, I didn't want to do that till after it was approved and made sure nothing was forgotten or anything, so that I can relink those, but that's.
I'll make a motion to approve the Program of Studies for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, gosh, school year.
Oh, my gosh.
I have a graduate that year.
You do?
Is there a second?
A second.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, passes five zero zero. Thank you very much.
Amazing, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright, going back to the agenda, Student Representative Report, do you have anything for us tonight?
Yep, it's on the slideshow.
Give me one second, Anthony.
Alright.
Load it up there.
Oh, my, my presentation is not as good as GMS is.
Sing it if you really wanted to.
Good.
Break out the choreography.
Let me put it in slideshow mode and.
Alright.
There you go.
So, just recent past activities, just Ski Club started up last Friday.
Where did they go?
Pat's Peak in Hennecker.
Do you know how many students participate?
There's a lot, between the middle school and, there was over a hundred between the middle school and high school, and the elementary school even has a program with Pat's Peak this year instead of just McIntyre.
That's awesome, and they waited for real snow, so that's good.
Yeah.
Smart.
So, hockey is six, one and oh on the season, they play tonight against Berlin. Basketball is five and four for boys, they play tomorrow against Hillsboro Daring. Girls are three and six, they play Friday against Belmont. Indoor track has had four meets, they've been pretty good so far this season. Wrestling has had some meets, they've been pretty good. And then Winter Cheer, cheers on the basketball, and they have their first tournament still in February.
Berlin? That's a hike.
It is home for them, though.
Okay.
But it's, their home ranks all the way in Congress still.
Jeez. It is a hike, no doubt, but think of the flip side of that, imagine being in Berlin, everything is a hike. So.
So, current events, just the auditions for the play at Campbell. And then upcoming activities, the student council will be holding like an end of the semester recap to like recap the end of semester of like what student council does in the school. Um, January twenty-second, competency recovery is the twenty-second and twenty-third for all students, and then twenty-fourth of January is when the new semester starts, and I think that's it.
Any questions for Anthony from the board? Hearing none, thank you so much for the update, and we will keep going. I would like to open the floor up to community comment on agenda items, so if there's anyone here that would like to make a public comment, um, without an expectation of a response by any school board members to matters that are as part of our, uh, agenda tonight, now is the time to do so. And I'm gonna go ahead and close community comment, thank you for your input. Um, correspondence?
Yes, we have some. Let's see, so I'll begin with the first correspondence that we received after our last meeting. Just scroll down here. That's not it. Here we are, board correspondence for the January fifteenth meeting, so January third, um, we had an email from Doug Totten with the tax rate estimate for twenty-four, twenty-five. January fourth, Kayla Collins sent meeting notices for upcoming board meetings through June nineteenth. Um, oop, sorry, I lost it. January fourth. Oh, I'm sorry, January third. Nope, January fourth, sorry. Um, an email from Mike Juddy, um, responding to Mr. Oblenas for, about the building aid ranking and reports. Um, I don't know why I put that first, because Ron Oblenas wrote to us on January fourth requesting a copy of the building aid application from the reports and the rankings, um, and at that time, Dr. Juddy did not have access to it, it was owned by former employees, so we have since updated that.
Yeah, so we actually found out, this was really interesting, I thought that it would been, would have been one of our former employees, it was actually Kyle who had that, and so that's why we couldn't find it on our servers, because.
Because it was his document.
Didn't have it, so anyway, we now have it.
We now have it. Is it posted on the?
It is.
On the website? Okay, on the reimagining GMS website?
Uh, let me verify that, I think we did that, let me make sure. It's definitely in the folder for facilities, which you all have access to.
Okay. January seventh, um, Ron Oblenas requesting clearer posting of upcoming meetings, um, responses from JD Sun, John Brunel outlining where town meetings are posted, and a response from Andrew Cutter outlining the schedule for the bond hearing, budget hearing, and the Budget Committee meeting last week. January seventh, Christine Durand wrote, um, regarding her security concerns after an incident at LMS. Um, January tenth, response from Mike Juddy, addressing time email was sent, investigation, police staffing, and response. January seventh, Jan Sullivan sent the draft public and non-public minutes and an email with the links to those drafts in Google Docs, Google Docs. January eighth, Heidi Ames, questions from Budget Committee on Article One to be discussed at the Facilities Improvement Committee meeting. Um, January tenth, Kayla Collins, CHS Program of Studies change sheet, and the CHS draft Program of Studies came in from Val Nelson on January tenth. January eleventh, Beth Ducatelli, um, wrote expressing dissatisfaction with the portion size and offerings at CHS, um, dining room in light of upcoming the price, up, the upcoming price increase. Um, Lauren Crowley responded on the same day, addressing the USDA portion requirements and photos of fruits and veggie options at CHS, with a response from Beth Ducatelli, "Thanks for the explanation, suggesting to offer a bigger, a bigger-sized meal at a higher price, rather than have students purchase two full meals," and then there was a follow-up email from Lauren Crowley and a response to that follow-up on January twelfth. January eleventh, Kayla Collins, multiple emails sharing GMS principals' report policies, GICI and JICI. January eleventh, Doug Totten circulating slides for bond hearing. Response from Andrew Cutter noting slides should include the thirty-year bond, board should consider twenty-year once economics of each option is clear. Um, Doug Totten responded in agreement, and there was a response from Mike Juddy, um, offering praise for successful bond hearing. January twelfth, Ann and Al Maradi sent two emails, um, one with a credit card manifest and one with a check manifest, response from Andrew Cutter in thanks. January twelfth, Andrew Cutter forwarding contact info for new police chief. January twelfth, Ron Oblenas sent a spreadsheet, um, that he created with estimated tax increases. Um, I'm not sure if you responded to the full board, I resp, I received your response, um, a correction to Mr. Oblenas, you CC'd me, um, on it, just a correction of some of the numbers that he was using that were.
Yeah, I don't know if I get the one original, I think you might have forwarded it to me.
I forwarded the original to you, and then, yeah, and then you responded, I think, just to me and Doug.
I replied to all, I think, too.
Okay, um, I can share that with the full board if not everyone received it.
So if you can circulate that.
Yep, we'll do that. January twelfth, Kayla Collins, agenda for January sixteenth meeting, seventeenth meeting. Um, January twelfth, Heidi Ames thanking the board for successful bond hearing and budget hearing directive to begin planning for the deliberative session. Um, and then on January fifteenth, we had a notification of the untimely death of a twenty twenty-two CHS graduate.
Twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three, I wrote that down before it was, the correction came out, twenty twenty-three CHS graduate. And that was all for correspondence.
Thank you very much. Uh, moving into, uh, general business, Superintendent's Report.
So just to let the board know, the deadline for citizen petition warrant articles was last week, and that has passed, there were no petition warrant articles received by the school district clerk. Um, another thing is a reminder that the filing period for school board opens on January twenty-fourth and then closes on February second, so that deadline is, is coming up for candidates, and you would file here with the town clerk, who is also the school district clerk, so Terry has both hats, and she is the right person to receive that filing. I want to let the board know that I had a meeting today with the new police chief, uh, Dan Jones, um, he and I were scheduled prior to my, I couldn't come to work days, so we pushed it back to my first day back, uh, very good conversation. so we pushed it back to my first day back. Very good conversation. We talked about the incident that had occurred last week, and we also had just general conversations. So he'll be joining us tomorrow at our emergency management meeting. We, I learned about his experience working in Gorham, Maine with both SROs in the schools and the school districts and so forth. And so I really feel like we're in a good spot as a town as he rebuilds the department. So the challenge is going to be the open positions in the department, but he certainly has a goal to get that back on track and is intending to be visible and available in our schools. I let him know that my stance was, we would love to have you come in and have lunch with kids. That's, you know, you just let us know. Nobody's gonna turn into a, no, 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 that's not what we do here. We want to see a police presence in our building. So I think it was a really positive meeting. I'll keep the board updated, and I don't know, Peter or Matt, whoever attends tomorrow's emergency meeting, he will be there in person for that, so you'll get a chance to meet him there. I just wanted to give a quick update on COVID and illness in our schools. We got a lot of junk going around, to be very honest. The middle school has been hit in particular hard. There's just a lot of stuff, a lot of activity out there. So even though we're not tracking it, thank God, we're not doing that daily form any longer, right now is a tough time with airborne illnesses and the holidays and people getting together and so forth. So just be mindful of that going forward. It's, you know, we had a staff member who was sent home today by the nurse because the person was not well, and we needed to make sure that we took care of that. So with all our other shortages, you know, the illness is not helping us out at this point. So just keep that in mind. And I want to thank Heidi, because all of a sudden in the, I'm watching the bond or budget hearing at home, and I'm like, oh my gosh, people are gonna think I like skipped town or something, like where is he? So I, I'm like, I don't know, I'm homesick. It was unbelievable how fast. I went from a tickle in my throat to full-blown knocked out in about 12 hours. It was unbelievable how quickly it progressed. So I'm pleased that I'm back now and the mask, tomorrow's my last day of masking, so Friday I'll be totally back to normal. And I also want to just compliment everybody publicly. I thought the bond and the budget hearings, watching it on the big screen at home is not the same as being there, but you guys did a great job. Doug, you did a great job, just sort of taking control of the situation, letting people know where we are with stuff, having the facts, and, you know, I was just very impressed watching everybody from the couch. So thank you for the work that goes into that, because I know it doesn't just happen. It takes a lot of planning work to make that pull off, so thank you for that. That's what I have for you, unless you have anything for me.
Any questions for the superintendent? Hearing none. We'll move into business and operations. It is our second meeting of the month, so we do have our monthly report here, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Totten.
Thanks. So definitely multiple things on for this month. So the first one is just the December financials. I don't think you'll notice anything really big that sticks out, but if you have any questions, let me know now or email me. I also put in there the snow removal contract, because we're, the contract ends at the end of this year, and so this would be an extension with the same provider for snow removal at the same rate for, that we're paying this year for next year, and then it goes up 15% for the following year, and then stays the same the third year of the contract. So what do we get with that? We get somebody who has local equipment, has the larger type equipment. We cannot plow our properties with a half-ton pickup truck, so it is much bigger equipment that comes in, does a safe job, then also disperses the sand and salt, which then clears up the snow even more. So we have somebody who is checking our parking lots even before we check our parking lots, and who is always reacting promptly to any phone calls that we have. But wanted to bring forward the contract, because we had talked about the contract last time it came up as well.
Can you just clarify, there was a question on Facebook at one point about who, what it is that the contractor does for snow removal versus what the district and district employees grounds does for snow removal, just to put it out there and make sure it's clear.
Yep, so the contractor does all, you know, the entryways, the parking lots, loops around the building, and then our staff does the walkways from the building out to the roadways. So our staff are the ones that you might see shoveling or with the snowblowers, where the, the snow contractor is one you're seeing in the bigger equipment pushing the snow in the parking lot and adding the salt to the driveways coming in as well as all the parking lot.
Playground? That is, is that district or is that the contractor?
Playground would be...
GMS?
The blacktop is done by the class.
Okay.
Dr. Juddy, maybe you could, it might make sense to clarify this, because in the typical Litchfield fashion of damned if you do, damned if you don't, we can't seem to win with anything that we do. You know, the comments that you were referring to online, it seems like people have questions as to, we've highlighted, and we as a board have been very clear with you, that we have shortages and we need to handle our staff appropriately. So we've told you that if we have to delay things, that is the unfortunate reality of having low staffing, which people may not like, but that's the reality. But there were questions that seemed to stem from, well, you know, why, why aren't certain things contracted out such that they could just be handled no matter what? So in terms of the process of declaring a delay or a snow day, there's a lot that goes into that, obviously. Can you just touch quickly on those things to get that back out there, too, so people understand?
Sure. And if I don't hit all the right points, just ask me another question and follow-up, please.
Sure.
So let's talk about the two-hour delay that we had. And, you know, part of what was driving that is that we have three custodians on day, and we have three at night reliably, and then we picked up a couple more at GMS. So, and Joe, who is the custodial supervisor, has been covering at LMS on second shift. So, you know, it all depends on when the snow comes, because when we're looking at a morning time, we have three custodians to do all those walkways. You know, when Doug said entryway, he means the road entryway. He doesn't mean the entryway to the school. That's our crew that takes care of that. So that's not something that Eddie's gonna take care of. So, you know, I have to think about how are we gonna get all that done properly sanded and make sure that staff and students, you know, you're talking a lot of people going to the building, they need a safe access, you know? All we need is one accident on a, on a ice, for example, and, you know, the, what's the committee? The joint loss committee was going around today, taking note of issues in the buildings, right? So, so we need to make sure that everything is clear and safe for people to get in. Think about GMS for a second. So you asked about, somebody asked about the playground, but now you have the entryway out to the portables, and that whole area, which I wouldn't consider playground, but that's gotta be, you know, Eddie's not able to get back there with the bigger equipment. So that's our crew that's snow blowing and shoveling and making sure that there are pathways that are safe. You've got, I mean, the handicap ramps are long, and they've gotta be cleared out. So all of that has to go into the thinking when we have a diminished crew.
And our crew doesn't work around the clock.
They do not. And, and we used to have two grounds guys, and we no longer have the grounds guys, right? So right now, those positions are vacant. One of the grounds guys is helping out on second shift at the high school, but he's not available to help shovel at 6:00 AM to get schools open. So that's why we did a delay, because we needed to make sure that it got done and taken care of, so that it was safe for everybody to arrive.
That's in addition to their other tasks that they have to take care of when there's not snow.
Correct. They have to unlock all the doors, turn on all the lights. I mean, all the morning things that you would go through to get a building up and going, make sure that the heat is working, check on the furnace to make sure everything's operating, et cetera. So you have those things that need to be done, and oh yeah, we have to go out and shovel also, so, or snow blow. So that's one factor. This last storm, so to me, I, I didn't want to cancel yesterday. I wanted to have school, because I'm like, we can do this. This is, this is just late fluff. It's gonna come all day. It's kind of pretty. It's like a snow globe. We're good. We're gonna make this work. Until you looked at the duration of it, and then you looked at the crew and who was gonna clean it up and when they were gonna do it, and ultimately, it was just like, we can't be in school today. It's gonna be all day long. So I got text messages last night when they finished up. I think they texted us around 6:30 or so last night, and they had finalized stuff, but they, but the snow was still coming down at that hour. And they're like, we're gonna have to touch it up again in the morning. So again, you, you know, looking at exactly who we have for crew, where they are, and what they can do. You know, the good news is, when you have a school cancellation, you're not doing all the garbage and all the cleaning and all the other stuff from that day. So you are able to dedicate a little more attention to the parking lot, but that's not always the case. It depends on what activity is going on and where it is.
And, you know, just to reiterate the fact, the people that study the weather and are paid to predict the weather don't always get it right, and we're relying on their information. So, you know, as frustrating as it is to...
But you start calling, I mean, you're in touch with Kevin Brown, the road agent, even bef, before you make that call.
So let me talk for a second. I'm on a list served with 17 superintendents all in South Central New Hampshire. It started the night before with our people thinking that we need to cancel. And then it began with one, one of the supers saying, I had a personal conversation with Kevin Scrooper, and here's what he's saying. And I'm like, okay, but I got a personal email from our guy that we compensate to give us the weather, right? And he's saying, there are two models right now. One model does this, and one model does this. One model means we get an inch of snow, and one model means we get six. He said, I'm waiting until morning to tell you which model it's, it has actually taken, which track it's actually taken. So I texted back to the group and said, to me, it's a morning call, because I don't want to be sitting here canceling school with an inch of snow. So let's wait and see where it actually lands. And we all stayed the course with waiting on this one. There are plenty of cases where it's like, it's a no-brainer. Like, we just have to make the decision the night before. So yeah, so, so here we are. We have our own personal meteorologist. He's delivering us Litchfield-specific weather, every single, by the way, we get what, two emails a day, I think, from him with updates so that we're able to stay on top of it. We're monitoring that, talking to neighboring superintendents. I mean, it's, it's an ongoing process. And my morning begins at four. I have to get up at four and take a look at, okay, what do we have going on? What, what are people saying? What's this forecast? Who's doing what? That's when the whole process starts in order to make a decision. So.
Thank you. Hopefully that clarifies.
Yesterday was the right call.
I do, too. The roads were terrible.
I drove to work. It was not pleasant driving, and there were cars all over the place.
Somebody went off the road across from Wilson's yesterday, too, right, in the morning?
In the morning, yeah.
And actually, the last two major storms we've had, over by my office in Lunedary, there's been two deaths. So, I mean, it's, it's, you know, can't take it lightly.
And we have to remember that, you know, the critic who has the, you know, the fully armored four-wheel-drive vehicle, right, is not a 17-year-old kid who got their license last week. That's who I'm thinking about when I'm saying, okay, what are we gonna do here? So there is a, you have to factor all of that stuff in. And one of my colleagues said, you know, when you're sitting on the witness stand explaining how you were smarter than all the other superintendents who canceled, are you ready to say, well, I had a personal weatherman who advised this? It's not easy stuff at all, at all. So we do the best we can, and sometimes we get it wrong. You know, last year, there was that snow squall that came out of nowhere, and it slicked the roads up and it made a mess. Nobody saw it coming. It wasn't in any forecast. We were all caught off guard, and then you just have to deal with that. And, you know, we deal with that by saying, high school, you are, you know, no senior release, nobody's leaving until the roads get, you know, treated, et cetera, because just have, have, go have a snack in the caf, because we're not gonna let you go out on the road at this point. And they get it. We do that once a year, but it's important.
So back to the contract for a moment, for snow plowing, right? Per our district policy, do we have to go back out to RFP on this one?
We're allowed to extend with somebody if we feel it's in the best interest.
We did go, did, correct me if I'm wrong, did we go out to contract last time?
No.
We did not?
No.
No, last time it was, when I, when I was here, it was an adjustment to the contract.
That's what it was, okay.
I don't know what happened before that.
Yeah.
I mean, I do think it's prudent of the board to at least see what our options are through an RFP. You know, I understand cost increases, et cetera, and very thankful for Mr. Dalton's work to keep our buildings open and operational. I just think we have to do our diligence here.
Sounds, sounds right to me.
I appreciate that he's local. I appreciate he's been doing it for how many years? But I think what I've heard from taxpayers is they, they want us to at least have options when, and make sure that we've...
But we also have to have the justification to support the number that we're paying, right? And we don't know that unless we go up to bid and see what's...
I agree with that, too. Seems tight, but I have no experience in this.
I can't say if it's all or not.
Right, right.
All right, so it sounds like we're creating an RFP, and we'll move from there.
Is that the Willoughby Board? It sounds like it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so Dr. Juddy, if you could bring up the tax year 24 tax rate estimate?
Yep, you want it up on the screen?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So just want to walk people through this, as we make sure people are informed when they make decisions come this March in a deliberative. So there are different groups creating, you know, what's making up your, no, sorry, the...
Oh, hang on. I clicked the wrong tab. Bear with me. You don't want this, you want...
The second one, yeah, the text.
This one.
Yeah.
No, it's actually the, it's, it's a wrong link. It's coming up as that. Let's see if this is, nope, they're both the same link.
Click on it.
It worked for me.
It worked for me, too.
Yeah. Tax year 24?
There it is.
That is so bizarre. Anyway, I'm in. Sorry.
So the summary pages, it shows you where we would be from the operating budget, and then the different warrant articles that have a monetary amount associated with them. Some warrant articles are using fund balance, therefore, there's, there's no more, there's not a raising of additional funds, additional taxes at that time. So it's broken up into the operating budget, and then also if the default happened. So you can see kind of where the rates are, and also on this, a number we'll be filling out somewhat soon will be the warrant from the elementary, what the first year impact on that. So it's the next tab, the tax rate from operating, that would really walk people through, okay, we're starting with a general fund of $24,927,265. We're adding on to that food service and special revenue. How do we get to that tax rate? Because if I just put in those numbers with the valuation, the tax rate would be much higher. But again, how we get to the tax rate is we have our appropriations, and then we start subtracting out our revenues. So revenues are, they're not known. They are estimates looking at what has happened in the past, what is currently happening now. And if we estimate low, that means that at the end of the year, we have more money going back, because we have increased revenues. If we estimate too high, that means that we would have to raise more money. So as, as we go down, you can see that a lot of times they are pretty similar to what we used the year before, or the years before. So we're not trying to create a spike ourselves unless there's, unless there's reason to kind of create that spike. So the special education aid, you might see that goes up, but that's because we have more students who are in residential placements, so we're getting back not that full cost again from the state, because again, it's three and a half times the average cost, and we get back 80% from the state. So as we move down here, if we scroll down to around line 42, row 42?
42, got it.
So this is where we're starting to kind of group some of those revenues together. So we have revenues from food service, which we are gonna deduct out. That's the money that we believe we're gonna get from the federal government, a little bit from the state, and then also from local sales. So that number is $135,000 less than we think we're gonna have for expenses. So that's, that, that difference where we're, we're not calling it a self-funding program anymore. We're not gonna be able to raise the money through federal money and from sales, so we're gonna have to raise that additional amount in local taxes. So instead of subtracting out the whole amount, we're subtracting out the part that we believe we are gonna raise. Now with the special revenue fund or grants fund, we can only use in that fund what comes in as grants, what we know as our, that we have options for, for those grants. So when we put $575,000 that we're going to expense, then we're always gonna match that dollar for dollar with that revenue. So as we slide down more, we can see that we have, we're subtracting out food service, special revenue fund, and then also just the other revenue and credits which are associated with local and federal and state. And then we take out the adequacy aid, as well as locally retained statewide education tax, and that gets us to our number, which we have the valuation going into. I forgot to, though, if we go back up to row 38, and, so starting at row 38. So here, this is where that $497,000, which is associated with the elementary land, we had plans to purchase the land. The land is no longer for sale, so that money will be going to use to offset taxes. So again, it's not a check written to individual taxpayers. It will go into, this is how much we need to raise, and now we need to raise $497,000 less. So that's where it offsets taxes, makes taxes lower. So we wanted to be clear on that here, so we're, you know, we're using a $200,000 fund balance to reduce taxes, and then that $497,000, which is separate than that, which is earmarked of, we're not touching that money, because we know that money's... And then that four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, which is separate than that, which is earmarked of, we're not touching that money because we know that money's going back to reduce taxes. So if we scroll back down to the bottom, this is where we now use that sixteen million, seven hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And that's divided by the local valuation. So what the town did and what we did was we did it two million dollars more than our most recent, the current valuation of the town. There are different projects that are currently in the town, whether that be townhouses or homes, those should be finishing up. And we should have, you know, higher appraisal rate as well. So that's the expectation. I think the expectation is that that valuation will continue to grow a little bit for the next several years also. So as we divide and then we multiply by a thousand and get your per thousand rate, that's where we get the thirteen dollars and seventy-seven cents, which is on row fifty-nine. So it is that number that we're comparing to column E's thirteen dollars and ninety-six cents, which is the actual rate that people are currently being charged for the operation of schools. So that's where we have the minus nineteen cents. And again, we, this clearly shows you that part of that is because of that four hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars that is being used to offset taxes from the land. So there's different ways to look at this, but if people wanted more of the specifics, this is a good sheet to go to. You scroll down, we have now what that impact is on assessed value of a house. As school board members have mentioned before, it's not the Zillow value of your house, it's your assessed value of your house. So as, as you look at whether your house is three hundred and fifty thousand, plus or minus, you can, you can see roughly what you'd be expected to pay in taxes if this is for the operating budget, if the operating budget passes. So what we need to operate school, which includes food service. If you move over to the next tab, the tax.
Real quick, before you move over, that, just to clarify, and I, I know this is to be a case, this is the school impact on the bottom for the house values. This is not including the town impact.
That is.
Just because some people might be, if they go look at this, they may be confused because they're used to looking at them combined. So this is just the school.
Just the school.
And this isn't all the warrant articles. That's just the operating.
This is just the operating. Just the operating budget. So, and there's, the budget committee is putting together a spreadsheet which will combine the two. And I believe Mr. Oblenas is also putting together a spreadsheet which is combining the two. So there'll be, there'll be a lot of information to inform the voters of Litchfield.
Before you move on, we've had this conversation like a thousand times. I think it's worth repeating though.
Thousand and one.
Thousand and one in about two seconds. The reduction of taxes for the elementary land, we are required to handle that this way. Meaning we are required to take that as a reduction of the taxes, right? Because the budget committee had, some of the budget committee members had a lot of heartburn over showing a negative tax impact, right? Because it's, the budget went up, no one's hiding that, the budget went up. And so they felt as though that was misleading and we're trying to clarify, we're not intending to be misleading here, but this is the way we have to show this, correct?
That is correct. So, so the work that you see.
If I may, correct me if I'm wrong, you could have left the money there in the account, right? And not returned it and said, let's hold and see what ends up happening here. Maybe some land will become available in the future. Then it wouldn't have resulted in this impact this year, maybe next year, maybe the year after. Eventually, that money was coming back. Or, you know, so I, I get the frustration, but as I'm sitting there and I'm like, again, damned if you do, damned if you don't. We're, circumstances beyond our control, we can't buy the land. So we're turning the money back and now we're being criticized that it's resulting in a spike. And it's like, I, I, I don't know what else to do. Other than we could have waited till it lapsed in twenty twenty-nine, right? The other thing is, I guess you could have put like some other warrant article on there. You still could put a warrant article on there that steers that money into something else, like back into a reserve fund or back into something. In which case, you know, it still is going to show this way as a reduction, right?
Because you'd have to raise and appropriate the money under a separate warrant article. So we still have to go back. I, I, I don't, I don't think, I think the majority of voters would prefer that the money come back to them. I mean, we've talked about it a million times, when it's raised and appropriated for something, we're trying to make sure that we're very clear that's what it's for. And if that's not what it's going to be for, it's coming back to you. I think they, I think most voters appreciate that from what I've heard. I think it's just the case of, you know, again, people like transparency. We are bound to do it this way and I think all we can do is put it in the voter guide to clarify, which is our, I think our goal. But I just, you know, wanted to again, remind everyone because there's been so much conversation about that. It is not an attempt at hiding anything. It's unfortunately the way that you have to show the tax impact because it is a reduction this year. But it is a one-year reduction. So next year, that will, there will be a, it will not reflect next year, like the, next year is going to show an increase in the taxes, barring any, some other reduction that comes up, right?
I think it's tough because as taxpayers, it would be nice to get a check for, I don't know how much it would be, twelve dollars and nine cents per taxpayer or whatever it is with the money being returned. Or when there is an underspend at the end of June and we have, return, I think it was four hundred and sixty-eight thousand or some large number, that's not seen as a check that lands in people's mailbox, that's not seen on the tax statement. And so it's, it's harder to visualize and it's harder to understand when it's put this way, I think. You know, and I know about it. I understand, you know, I've been sitting here through these conversations and, and I can understand why it's confusing.
I think that's why it's just important for us to just continue to reiterate these points at every juncture that we can. Because it seems like the information does seem to trickle out. Like someone may not have watched the last ten meetings, but they may watch this one. So that's why I bring those points up again.
No, I think it's, I think it's definitely important to kind of keep going over this every year, even though it's something that happens every year, it only happens like once a year. So when we talk about, you know, this form where it shows fund balance reuse taxes of two hundred thousand and then reduction of taxes associated with the elementary land of four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, when I put that together on the DRA form, it's going to be lumped together. But we specifically chose to separate them out so people can see clearly that that four hundred and ninety-seven thousand that was going to go to the land is now being used to offset taxes. And, and this, and it's this year where it will, well, next tax year where it will impact.
So Doug, can you talk about the property valuations? Did you say that we overestimated by, we added two million dollars to the property valuations?
So when I touched base with the, the town and they, they definitely are more involved with, with property valuations. I asked them what they were using for their number and they said they were using two million more than the most current one.
The total valuation of our property.
So if you're on line fifty-seven, you can see that we're one billion, two hundred and thirteen million. Where last year it was one billion, two hundred and eleven million. So we went from two hundred and eleven million to two hundred and thirteen million. So I just, to keep things consistent, I use that two million dollars more to divide it out by the amount that we need to raise.
So that's the same number the town is using?
Same number the town is using. And it might not be, be that number. You know, again, at the end of the day, DRA will let us know what that number is on next tax rate setting and it could be different. That's why all these are estimates of taxes. These are not your guaranteed taxes because your valuation could change. The amount of revenue that comes in could change. The amount of fund balance that is used to offset taxes can change. So there are several things that can change to go from the estimate to the actual. So the final tab on the bottom is saying, okay, this is, the operating budget is something that has to happen. We have to have a, a budget to operate the school. And then there are warrants which are choices of whether they're going to happen or not. And if it's a yes vote, then sometimes there is financial and monetary money that needs to be raised. And sometime, if there's a no vote for monetary, then no money is raised. So we are going to have three warrant articles that would raise additional taxes. So that would be both the contracts for the LEA, the LSSA, and then we'll also have the elementary school, the year one payment for that, which we'll need to raise taxes for. So you can see from this form that there's other warrant articles on here, including the ones going to the reserve funds. But those, any dollar that we are appropriating is being offset by fund balance. So the only way those get, get funded is through the use of fund balance. Therefore, there's no additional taxes being raised on those. So the first three that you see in columns B, C, and D, those are the additional ones that if people vote yes for, that would raise the tax rate and therefore on your assessed value results in a different tax bill. So one of the things that we're going to be looking at tonight is the elementary school to figure out what number we're putting in for that. So we have, so then if we go back to the summary page, once we figure out that number, then people can kind of see, okay. If I do the operating, again, it has to be the operating or default. That's, that's a known in New Hampshire. So it has to be one or the other of those. And then the residents of Litchfield have their choice on, on everything else.
On the tax rate for the operating tab, right? And maybe it's just the way the columns are labeled that's throwing me off here, right? Am I looking at FY twenty-four budget or FY twenty-five budget?
You're looking at F, so column C's, C and D is FY twenty-five budget, but they call it the twenty-four tax year.
Okay, so if it's FY twenty-five budget, why are, why is the four ninety-seven in land being represented in the FY twenty-five budget if it's being returned out of FY twenty-four?
Because it's not, it's returned at this next tax rate setting. So this is, it's being, it's not being added on, it's being reduced by four ninety-seven.
Is that why we had it sunset on June thirtieth?
Right.
Yeah.
So if we had done it on June twenty-ninth, it would have come out of?
There's, there's no way to get to this current tax rate because it's already established through DRA. So DRA has already communicated with myself, communicated with the town. They've come up with a tax rate, which is what, that you're thirteen dollars and ninety-six cents? So my understanding, there's, there's no way to impact that thirteen dollars and ninety-six cents. The next time we can impact that is next tax rate setting, which again, they'll reach back out in September, October, we'll connect, the town will connect. And at that point, it's during that point that they're seeing in their forms that we're returning. They're not going to necessarily know it's four hundred and ninety-seven from the land, but it's going to be part of the numbers that are going to offset the taxes at that point.
And don't forget that we did consult legal counsel on returning the funds, because there wasn't a clear cut mechanism for returning the funds. And we wanted to make sure that we got them back as soon as possible. And legal counsel said that you really had to let the fiscal year run in order to be able to appropriately deem it as lapsed, which is what we voted on as a board. So we were doing that in compliance with the legal recommendation.
In fact, the original draft that went to legal was to lapse on January first. You know, had we found out about this earlier and we tried to lapse before the tax rate got set in November, legal still would have said it has to be June thirtieth. That's the date, it has to lapse at the end of the year. You have to carry it on the books this year. So, you know, it's just unfortunate, but that's the way it rolls.
How do I reconcile row ten? So the tax rate from operating, row ten, right, the totals per fiscal year, right? How do I reconcile that back to what the voters approved?
Row ten is, is the warrant article. So if you look at the.
So remind me, because I just, I quickly looked up what voters approved for operating budget in twenty twenty-three. And I'm seeing different amounts, at least from the voter guide that I pulled up.
Okay, so, so what they've already approved is the question then.
You're, you're looking at column E.
So you would want to look at column E and you'll notice that.
Correct, I'm looking at column E, but I'm not reconciling to.
Twenty-six million, seven sixty-seven, two eighty-three, two of the number on the warrant.
According to the, well, would that include the land though too?
So if you notice that column E, E six has a little note on it. So if you click on the note, that's going to help you reconcile.
Includes three fifty warrant and four ninety-seven land.
So if you subtract that out, that's going to be your, your operating budget, which we started from this year as we created our new operating budget. So subtracting those numbers out.
Okay.
Good question. And that's why, when I was first looking, I'm like, why? I wish it could be a little bit simpler, but I put the note there to help add, because again, this is.
That twenty-five oh twenty-seven, so I would need to subtract out the warrant articles in the land?
Yeah.
I still think something's off.
And food service and special revenue and capital projects, right?
No, because he's just trying to get to the operating budget.
So twenty-four, one eighty then, three twenty-eight.
Yeah, and if you, so when you go to the fiscal, so if you went back to the board report.
Yeah.
Back to the board report, yep.
And now you click on that first one.
Oh, the one I was in.
The one you were in, yeah. And then you go to school board changes or budget committee changes, either one. Actually, you're right there. So on the top right-hand corner, you can see that the fiscal year twenty-four budget is the same number that Mr. Cutter just read of twenty-four million, one hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight. So that's what, that's the operating budget that we started with this year. And as we kind of talked about, what's our change, percent change going into next year and what's our dollar change going into next year? It was always tied to that same number.
I get the math there. I'm struggling to, how do I tie back to the, and again, I just have the voter guide from March of twenty twenty-three.
So then the next, oh, you want to tie back to what was on the budget would be.
Well, really on the warrant, right? Because I'm not seeing that.
So that would be the twenty-four, one eighty. And then let me just get back to where we are. And then to that, you'd have to add the food service and the special and the grants.
So twenty-four, one eighty.
Twenty-four, one eighty.
Right, plus food service of five seventy-five. Uh, no, plus the grant of five seventy-five.
Yeah.
Plus.
Food service, six ninety-four, four fifty.
Six ninety-four.
Plus the capital projects of four seventy-five oh five.
Four seventy-five?
Four seventy-five oh five.
Five oh five. Quick math. Twenty-five million, nine twenty-five, two eight three. Five million, nine twenty-five.
Which if you.
So that's twenty-five million, nine twenty-five, right? In the voter guide is twenty-five million, nine twenty. So I'm off by five grand somewhere. Anyway, okay, that gets me directionally in the same area that I was trying to get to.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure where that, that five grand went to at this point.
Don't say that.
Go with the, with tonight's math, I'm not sure.
Yes, there you go.
Oh, you had, I saw, I found it. Yeah, I had four seventy-five and you had four seven zero. Sorry, I misheard you. There's your five grand.
Yeah.
Okay.
There it is. We are back to the same number, so, which is good.
You're resigned TV.
And I appreciate that, that people ask these questions because I know there's people at home that, that are wondering the same thing. And, okay, I voted for this last year and now I can never see that number again. And it's not, we're trying to hide that number. It's just that after you vote, you, you didn't just vote for one thing, you voted for several things. And then DRA lumps them together at that point.
But I'm impressed that math came out, that so, you know, that's exactly, good double check or triple check.
I mean, that's what we're accountable to, right? So I want, I want to make sure that's kind of our star for the.
No, I think it's.
Absolutely.
Other questions?
Where can we make this available for public, for the public if they're looking for?
It's, it's in this agenda, which is.
It's in the agenda. Is, do we have a, a folder for warrant article items on the website?
We're starting to add stuff on, on the website, which is, yeah, so I, I can add this on the website as well. This is open to all, but so anybody who clicks on this.
That would be great to add it directly though, because there have been a few comments that it's hard to find some.
Yeah.
I personally have, I personally have a hard time finding anything.
Well, I think there's, there's a lot of things to find, so, you know, it's not just one thing.
Right, knowing what you're looking for, yeah.
Right, right.
All right, so next thing on the agenda is just the forms that we are required to post. One is the default, so the default is, is on there. The default is signed off by the school board. People have had access to the spreadsheet that I created, which walks through the default. This is a DRA form, which does it in a, in a more straightforward way, but the numbers don't change. So none of the numbers changed for the default there. We'll also have to post the warrant and then the MS twenty-seven budget form. So that, that is a budget committee that creates the budget. So the budget committee will be signing off on the MS twenty-seven. So with the timing of different votes, because the school board needs to vote on a couple of different warrant articles and then the budget committee needs to vote on one warrant article. And we need to have things posted by the end of the twenty-ninth. We're looking at kind of signatures on the afternoon of the twenty-sixth and morning of the twenty-ninth in order to get things posted. So just wanted to let that out there. We'll probably, last year, I, I think we left a lot of the paperwork here. That way it was one-stop shopping, so if budget committee or school board could come in and sign it just at the town hall. So we'll probably do the same thing again too. So I'll remind people with, with emails, but just wanted to let people know with, with the time. let people know with it, with the timing of things this year, where we're going to end up. Next thing is the bond options. So I don't know if you want to send out, I don't have it linked there yet, because we haven't gone over with the board yet. The elementary possible bond calculators, if I share that with you again.
This is what you sent today.
Yeah.
You sent it today?
Yeah.
I guess from the.
Super easy to understand, by the way. So.
I don't try to understand it until I wait till they explain it.
Can you add the link in, in the agenda?
Yeah.
It's in my inbox?
It's in your, yeah. Well, I just sent it to you again too.
Yeah. Well, I just don't need every C. My whole inbox at the moment is messy.
So as, as Dr. Jettie gets this brought up, so again, this is the fact that we have multiple options when we do a bond, as does any town. And a town would want to kind of look at what's best going to fit them, especially when you're talking about a construction loan, because construction loans can go for usually typically twenty, twenty-five or thirty years. Um, and there's different pluses and minuses depending on which one you go with. We talked a couple of different times about the timeline of this project being that construction wouldn't start really until the summer of twenty-five. So does it make sense to do multiple bonds? One would be a pre-construction bond for the finishing of the architecture work, um, as well as the, the final site work, uh, well, site survey. Um, and then you'd start your construction piece with the amount of building aid, state building aid that would come in. And then we'd do a construction loan for the remaining of the construction costs. And then we then go into equipping the building, uh, which is done obviously at the later parts of construction. And then we'd have a final kind of possible bond, short-term note, um, to get us to the end. Cause again, with state building aid, you get eighty percent. Once the, um, architecture plans are at a certain point and what's the state fire marshal signs off of it, and then you get your final twenty percent after all expenses are in, and the state has one to three months to kind of look at it and kind of talk back and forth with the town to make sure that the expenses are valid to, um, the, the building and building aid. So the purpose of this, if we go to the summary of the bond, is we asked the bond bank, um, to run, I don't know if it's like fifteen different bond options here. So I tried to create this to help us make a decision, um, knowing that there, there are multiple choices. So.
Hey Will, can, are we projecting this?
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. I just want to make sure.
And Doug, just to clarify, so bond A is one scenario, B is a scenario.
Somewhat. So bond A is, is one, is one bond. So if you look at bonds A through F, those are the bonds for the full amount that we would need to finance, um, to finish the, the project. So those bonds can either be level principal or level debt. And then we did it because it's construction, because the, the amount of money, we're not talking about paying it back in five years. We did it either for twenty, twenty-five or thirty years. So your typical mortgage that you would have would be a level debt where you're kind of paying the same amount each time. You're paying a lot more interest at the beginning and then as the years go on, you're paying more principal than interest. An option that we have with, with a bond is level principal. So whatever your principal is, you divide it by your amount of years and you pay that same amount of principal each year. So that's going to reduce the overall interest payments because it's going to knock down the interest a lot quicker. Um, so different, different options on that. So bonds A through F would be if we wanted, if we wanted to go with just one bond for this project, those would be kind of the ones that we'd be choosing from. If we want to go for multiple bonds for this, this project, then we would want to pick one of either G or H, and then one of I through N, and then one of O or P type of thing. So G or H is for that pre-construction, um, so about two million. And we'd want to probably run that about five years. That's, that's kind of the expectation for pre-construction costs. And then we'd have that thirty-four million dollars of construction cost, which again, lot, it's a project that's going to last thirty more years. So the asset life of it's going to be thirty more years. Um, so you could go thirty years, twenty-five years or twenty years. And then the last bit is equipping the building. So you're getting the desks in there, things like that. So about two million itself. Uh, that, it typically would be around ten years because again, your, your, your desk should last more than ten years, but you want to somewhat match it with, with where the shelf life of, of each asset is.
So in your model, because mainly have you access, right? Can you, if you update the bond chosen in the right-hand side, will it automatically update these numbers?
Yep.
That perfect.
Yeah, you did a great job with this, but now, now it makes sense to me.
Right?
So you don't have that, let me give you access.
File, if you do make a copy, you can have an Andrew play, you will copy. So make your own and.
Doug, real quick with the.
I thought I gave, I protected the sheets other than, I thought I let you able to choose the dropdown menus. That was my goal to let people kind of.
I don't think we can choose the dropdown menus. Um, with the equipping piece of it, uh, we have, and I just want to make sure that this is incorporated into this. Uh, one of the things that Mr. Mitchell has done over the years of acquiring furniture was try to acquire it with the idea in mind of some furniture being transportable. And we did actually factor that into the budget for the new elementary school. So, um, just in case there's any questions that are floating around out there about, you know, equipping and if people have paid attention in the past to furniture purchases, that has already been factored into the overall budget. So there is a, a savings already built into this number for reuse of some of the furniture, right?
Yep, that is, that is correct. So Mr. Mitchell knows that whatever furniture he's bought, those desks that he's bought, those are going over to the new building.
Just wanted to make sure.
Um, they are, they are good desks. They, they definitely have a lot more life in them. Uh, but there's a lot of furniture at GMS which won't be going over, uh, which is okay too. I mean, that's, we would have had to replace that furniture at some point anyways.
Now I'm excited by this. I like my own. So here's the deal, right? So we, I know we've been socializing a thirty-year payment, right? I, I just talking about it as an idea, right?
As a single.
As a single, right? That's been the context of the conversations over the past couple of months. So if we do level principal, which again pays down the debt faster, which I think is probably the right idea here, right? And if I just say option A or bond A using this model, which is level principal, full amount, thirty years, right? We get total payments of sixty-two million, seven hundred thousand. Okay? If we do the multiple bond, same strategy, level principal, and we do a combination of G, M and O, that will result in eleven million dollar savings in interest.
Say that again?
That will result in an eleven million dollar savings in interest, right?
So that's a twenty-year bond for the bulk of it.
Twenty-year bond, it's a twenty-year bond for the bulk of it, level principal, right? So it pays it down faster. And it has significant savings in interest in doing it that way. And this confirms our pre-modes, right? Where we're saying multiple bond, and as we presented budget hearing, multiple bonds is the right financially responsible strategic approach here because of not only continuing declining interest rates, and this number will grow.
Right.
Right? This is just as of today.
Right.
But because it has significant savings to the taxpayers.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see any, I, I, I don't see anything that suggests a single bond is the right answer. I guess the, the big question becomes level principal or level debt. And I guess the question that I would pose to everyone is, you know, we also need to look at what the estimated annual tax impact would be. Because one thing that you do have to consider, you know, if you're, if you're a homeowner and you're factoring this, right? The total interest paid is very, very important. Not to say that it's not as a town. But the one thing that you have to consider as a town is over these years, you are spreading the cost out over more taxpayers who may actually use the schools. So for our older voters who I've had many conversations with now, who have said, you know, I do support the schools, I'm never going to actually reap the direct benefit of this. So it does make it hard, it does make it a hard pill to swallow when you're paying the tax bill. Uh, you know, sometimes agreeing to pay more in interest to spread that out over more people might have some merit to it, to at least consider.
So if we want to look at the annual costs, if we move over to the bond estimate, so as soon as you change any of the things on this page, it impacts this page and the bond estimate. So if you go to the bond estimate, so now this is going on the bonds that, that Andrew chose. So the thirty-year bond for the single bond, uh, level principal, and then level principal with a twenty-year construction bond. And so you can see that there are payments that are due twice a year. But as you scroll over to the right, you have your fiscal year payments as well. And then the, the tax rate on what is that two million more than the current valuation. And I didn't adjust the tax rate for year, the valuation for years going forward, um, just because I think the more you predict that, the harder things are. And it's just easier to kind of, to, to work with a, a number that's more similar to people. But typically, you know, when you see houses going up and construction happening in town, the valuation is going to grow, which is then going to spread out the, the cost of the elementary to more people. So, but this is just using a consistent valuation, which again, it will not be consistent. The valuation of the town of Litchfield will continue to grow. So if we look at this, you can see what are the fiscal year payments. So again, you start in fiscal year twenty-five. But for either one, you're going to see it's, it's a lower payment because we sell the bond in July, this July, they don't, there's not a payment until February. That first payment is only interest. So it's just interest that gets you kind of from August through February. And then the next August is when you, you pay your principal and your interest at that point. So these numbers are coming directly from the bond bank. Um, I sent out in a follow-up email today. I, I showed you guys the schedules that I got, um, so you can see the, the exact same numbers that, that I saw. So the first year is always going to be different, no matter what we do. Even if we do that, that larger thirty-year, thirty-eight million dollar bond, the payment is only nine hundred and, not only, the payment would be nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Where typically the payment's going to be, you know, two point eight million, two point seven million, two point six million type of thing. Um, but that first payment is, is only interest. So I think it's important to look at that first year, but I think it's more important to look at the following years because those years are going to happen. The, the bond is going to be more than, than one year. There, so as you look at the, the other years, you can see the, the difference, um, that sometimes happens with, between a single bond and the multiple bond. It's really once you kind of scroll down. Because the key thing of the multiple bond is eventually you're only paying off that thirty-four million instead of paying off the thirty-eight million, because everything else is paid off. Another thing to note is that, um, with that twenty percent of the final building aid, the goal for, for the final bond and, and, and the equipping of the building would be to get a bond or a note that obviously you can prepay. Um, so we can use that twenty percent and just put it right in there. These numbers don't reflect that. These numbers, these numbers reflect us getting eighty percent of building aid and getting nothing more for either scenario. Um, but if, if, you know, building aid gets awarded to us, we believe we're going to be closer to that seven million. But this is, this is only with that eighty percent that we have within warrant article one as well.
So something that we talked about at the, um, the bond hearing was going with a multiple bond structure will give us an opportunity to hopefully cash in or, you know, take advantage of lower interest rates as the, you know, as they fluctuate over time.
Yep.
Um, and take out smaller bonds that we can pay off once we receive building aid, like you just mentioned. Are we able to do that with a single bond? Are we able to take advantage of those same lower interest rates and?
After ten years.
Well, it depends on who finances. So if it's the bond bank, then it's after ten years. And after ten years, it's not us saying we'd want to refinance it. It's a bond bank that makes that decision.
Okay.
Now, the bond bank has refinanced all, all their loans over the last several years because interest rates have been really low, not the last couple of years, but before that. They, they refinanced, so they will refinance because they want to save taxpayers money.
Just to clarify though, they will refinance down, they can't, they, they can't increase the rate, right? It is a fixed rate for the full.
Rate. So they, they would only refinance their.
If, if it was.
Bunch of loans together.
Okay.
Yeah.
Understood.
So, yeah.
And we can't pay it off early.
And we cannot pay it off early. So that's one way to get a loan. You can do, um, you know, private banks. We could go out to get our own bond rating, uh, which is much more difficult, much more costly. And, um, you know, there's a USDA loan that we might possibly be able to get as well, which there isn't as much of a prepayment. Um, everything that the bond bank tend, is, tends to be your, your easier way to go. And it pools you with more people. So, uh, you're going off the bond bank's rating, which is like a double A, it's a very high rating. Um, and because the, the municipal, you know, if it's, it's a municipal, that's, that's getting the loan by, by law, the taxpayers have to fund it every year. So the default is, is not really there and it's a tax-free exempt loan. Um, no matter what loan we go for, it'd be tax-free exempt, which will bring down the low interest rates. But these are going with a bond bank, which most people use. I'm not saying, I, I think if we went with a thirty-eight million dollar, one single bond, we probably wouldn't want to go with the bond bank. I don't know if we'd get lower rates in the bond bank at that point.
I, I mean, is there any discernible benefit to a single bond? I don't think that, I can't see a single benefit to going with a single.
Right. I, I guess that would be the only.
Interest rates can go up too, guys.
They can, right.
Right? And then.
But we're talking, we are talking about, uh, we're talking about a, what, eighteen-month span or, or so.
An election cycle though. It's going to be, we'll get a new administration or the same administration.
Right.
Two years from now.
Right.
So, yeah, interest rates can, can go up. They, they definitely can. Um, they, they are. I don't think we're going to get back into those interest rates where, you know, I was looking at some of the bond banks and they were like point nine seven type of thing. Um, you know, that might be tough to get back to, but there's a big difference between point nine seven and three or three point seven five. So when I reached out to the bond bank, you know, I asked them to, I, you know, kind of use what we had seen with, um, the fact that the bond bank's interest rates went down between July and January. They, if you go back to the summary of the bond thing, they said, well, we are always a little bit more conservative than that. So again, I wasn't asking them to be overly aggressive.
Right.
I was asking them to kind of keep that same trend. Um, but they, 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 they don't go with what we ask. They, they go with the same interest rate for everybody. So you can see that, uh, so summary of the bond?
Summary of the bond.
Summary of the bond. So for the bonds A through F, they have the same interest rates as bonds I through N, even though I through N is a year later.
Right, right.
But they, they kept the interest rates the same. So as of now, this is kind of, so this is with kind of those same interest rates. Um, now, like Peter said, interest rates could go up, they could go down. Um, for most people, we've heard about the, the expectation is that they're going to go down, but that's not a no, that's not a guarantee. Um, but as of now, these are for kind of the same interest rates that they most recently.
What's the, um, so if we talk about this, the timeframe between pre-construction and construction, uh, how, how, I don't recall from our facilities meetings, how big of a gap in time is, is that between those two bonds?
It's a year.
It's about a year. So you're talking about interest of, on thirty-four million dollars for an entire year that we'd be responsible for. If we did a, like, that, that, that right there is the savings. So, you know, it would have to be, I would think it would have to be a pretty drastic rate increase to offset that one year of interest savings.
So, so just to be clear, the benefits of a single bond for the full term, what are they?
Benefits of a single bond is.
I just want to make sure, I want to say it again.
Know what you're paying every year, roughly. It's, it's not the same exact payment every year, but it's, it's.
At the beginning.
At the beginning, you're going to know what you're paying every year and you project it out for, for thirty years. And there won't be, there's a little bit of bump up and then bump down with multiple bonds where there is no real bump up or bump down.
So it's more helpful for planning purposes.
More helpful for planning purposes.
And it's also fully transparent to the voter at time of March vote because they'll see the full tax impact.
They, they want though, because they won't know the interest rate.
So they'll only see the interest portion of it too. So not, nothing's going to, I think a lot of people, and I don't blame them, a lot of people are going to say. I would want to know on my March vote, what am I typically going to pay per year for this?
Right.
They're not going to get that on either one. They're going to get only the interest that is due six months later.
So that's where the voter guide is key.
That's where the voter guide is key.
Yeah.
But again, we have to, we have to continue to drive home the fact that no matter what year we do this in, we're not going, because the bond bank is selling the bonds in June or July, you said?
July.
July.
Yeah.
In March, we're never going to know the actual interest rate that we're going to get.
We can use the present rate, but it may not be, it is not likely to be the rate in July. It could be higher, it could be lower.
And so that's been my concern when the budget committee is asked multiple times. You know, we really want to show a tax impact on the warrant, which we understand that we can't do. But my concern would be, you know, we need to be clear that we don't know the interest rate until July. And, you know, in the off chance that it does go up, right, that's something that we can't predict either. And we never will be able to. That's the problem.
But in terms of the single bond and those are the, that's really where the benefit ends, is the planning piece of it, right? And saving potentially up to eleven million dollars by using multiple bonds, depending on which bond configuration we use.
Yeah. And I think if we compare, you know, I think you compare with thirty years for single bond and twenty construction or twenty with a single bond and twenty. So if I compare twenty and twenty, so even if we did twenty and twenty, which would be, you're still a savings of over one million. Actually, yeah.
What about thirty and thirty? Because I feel like we have talked about thirty years more than we've talked about.
Well, so here's, one, one point that a few people have brought up about the thirty year is, you know, are you now financing into a point at which you're having to start to replace things in the school? And people have been pointing to Campbell for that analysis.
I think that's a fair question.
Yeah.
And we've also been talking about a thirty year, kind of high level, because we haven't seen the rates associated.
Right.
Now we see the rates and I see it's a full, it's a whole point difference. That's a, it's millions of dollars in savings. That's a big deal.
So there's different ways to, yeah, there's multiple ways to look at the thirty year. You know, with a large construction project, which many kids are going to benefit from for years to come. The idea is if you do thirty years, you spread out that tax over people who are moving into town to get that benefit as well. If, you know, you kind of look at, you know, what I did was I went twenty-five years back. So I was trying to like, what was the median price for a house? I tried like thirty years ago, but I got it like twenty-five years ago. And they said it was like a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. So if I did a hundred and twenty-seven thousand for five percent, that is a monthly payment of six eighty-one on a house. So six eighty-one, like if you're looking at that now, that, that seems doable. But that six eighty-one is the same thing as back in nineteen eighty-eight, that, you know, felt like the same thing as like one thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars now. So the, when you go out further, you know, I'm not saying that two million isn't going to still be impactful, but it's, it seems less thirty years from now, twenty-eight years from now than it does now. So there's multiple ways to kind of look at what, what you want. I think, I think you do want to balance it though with what are you, with your total interest payments too, so.
I, I think the driving factor for me that I want to take a minute to look at here is looking at the multi-bond, multiple bond scenarios. Switching between level debt and level principal in twenty and thirty years. And I want to look at what the impact is on the assessed value of the houses and try to just get an idea of what the taxpayers are going to be looking at. Because the feedback that I'm getting from taxpayers who are maybe less inclined to vote for this is not that they don't necessarily support the school, it's that they are just really having a hard time.
This is your moment to do that because we need to vote on this.
I understand. But that's, I think that's where, in terms of directing this forward, that's what I would personally like to see, just to see if it's, if it's not a huge difference to the taxpayer on a, you know, annual basis, then I'm obviously inclined to save money if we can. But if we're talking a huge swing on the taxpayers, you know, I think that those who are going to be most affected, we need to consider annually.
So which numbers?
Can you copy the summary bond tab? Can you just right-click it and copy it or, I don't know who's driving?
I have it, but I don't have control.
I don't.
Can do it.
Okay.
Yeah, there it is.
If you right-click on the summary bond, you create a new one, right? Then you can compare through tabs, different scenarios and see the changes. Make it a little bit easier.
So why don't we, why don't we start by looking at one tab as level debt, one tab as level principal, both at twenty years? Multiple bond. Well, I guess you could compare both.
So I don't know if this, I guess the taxes there.
If I screw up mine or death, I guess it doesn't matter.
So you want to compare the level principal and the level debt?
I want to look at those both for twenty-year and thirty-year and just see what we're looking at on a tax impact.
So the tax impact one is more on the bond estimate page. So.
I was looking at the multiple bonds, the assessed value down the bottom of the summary page, but if it's better on the.
Yeah, the assessment, so that's again, though, only the interest portion. So it's that first payment, which is just the interest portion. So that's the number that we have to have on the bond, so that's why it's there. But again, when I go, when we look at it, it's really that bond estimate page, which gets us beyond fiscal year twenty-five and to the other ones. So we'd have to almost do it.
And that's the information people want to see.
No, I agree. I don't want to base it off of the first year.
Yeah.
So I did the make a copy thing. And when I hit the level debt and make that the single bond, it shows a fifteen million dollar savings.
Which scenario did you pick, Peter?
I picked B G M O.
E G M O.
Yeah, that's worst case.
Gee.
I hate spreadsheets.
Yeah, so that would be a single bond getting us to total payments of sixty-seven million. And the multiple bond getting us to total payments of fifty-one million. So, yeah, I think that probably is worst case, huh?
That's the biggest swing between the two of them.
So if you keep things consistent as far, especially with that construction bond, the multiple bond is always going to get you to a better spot. You know, it shows it can get you as much as fifteen million to a better spot, but.
Well, just reading the board, it sounds like, and I don't want to speak for anyone, that we are, it sounds like most of us are leaning towards the multiple bond, given the amount of savings that are there. I think I'm trying to understand what level debt versus level principal.
And the term.
The term, right.
So if you go to the bond amounts page, so this might help you a little bit.
Oh, yeah, okay, this is helpful.
So this is, this is just all, all the information from the spreadsheets I got.
I heard for the second I opened it.
Oh, my, so I got the spreadsheets at like three o'clock yesterday. And I had free labor around. So my kids, I started entering this myself because it's on a PDF. So I'm like, hey, Bodie, come on down. So he got to read off numbers. And then my daughter got to read off numbers. And they're like, my wife's like, do you want to be a BA now? And they're like, no. Like, I don't typically do this, so. So these are all the numbers. So if you compare A to B, so level principal, you can see that in August of twenty twenty-five, you're paying two million compared to the one point four because you're paying a lot more in principal. By paying a lot more, that much more in principal, you're going to have less interest at, by the end of the loan. So you compare A to B, C to D, E to F, as you kind of look at these. The numbers at the top is your total payment you're going to make. So, and it always starts with, well, it says here to level principal. So there's about a five million dollar difference if you do level principal compared to level debt for thirty years for the thirty-eight million. So this might be a good way just to kind of look at some of it as well. I know there's way too many numbers, but.
No, it's a lot of numbers, but in terms of the tax impact for not just the first year where the interest only, but the second year.
Because the second year will be bigger, right?
Correct.
We have to look at the second year when we're looking.
Second year is going to be more accurate to what people are going to be paying the first year. You know, if you remember, if you go back and you look, and I think I sent you the link to the fire station, they had a zero dollar tax impact for their first year on their actual warrant. That obviously it's not a zero dollar impact, we're paying for it now. But what was on the physical warrant was zero dollars. I think we want to be help, like, tell people what is you're actually going to be paying.
Right, because if we put a zero, they're going to go, wait a minute, there's no way that's a zero.
Way, right. Or even the smaller number.
Fire station, or did they?
They did.
People said there's no way this, no, no, I'm sorry. People didn't react that. Because it says zero on that.
The fire station was four million bucks. And the, the school always is looked at with a much more jaundiced eye.
Yeah.
Going back to the.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't really, I don't really care whether they question the fire department at the end of the day.
I don't recall there being any pushback about what was written there for a warrant article, making sure there are tables in the voter guide or anything along those lines at that time period.
But I mean, look, the calls. But then the calls for it are not unfounded calls. I think we all have the same goal, which is we want the taxpayers to be able to make informed decisions. So, you know, I don't fault anyone for being upset about that. It's just that there are, we have limitations on what we can actually show. And I just wish that people would understand that and work with us to try to get to the end result, which is how do we get the best information out to people? You know, subject to those limitations. I still, you know, I still think that I need to look at the numbers as they compare to what we're looking at. Like, do we have something on here that can show, sort of like on the summary bond page? You know, we're looking at under these scenarios, you know, for year one or year two, if you have a three hundred thousand dollar house, it's thirteen thirty-four tax impact for the multiple bonds. If we're going between level debt and level principal, does that jump up to twenty-three dollars? Like, you know what I mean? Like, I don't have any framework for what those, how those equate.
Well, I appreciate that you used three hundred thousand because, so I started adding, so if we go to the bond estimate, so I created two new columns and it's a house value of three hundred thousand. So what would be your, your payment? So again, I don't know, the pinkish, orangish color is your single bond and the bluish is your multiple bond. So, but this is with a twenty-year bond. So you're starting to see that, and it's not the same.
So I'm sorry, so the orange is a thirty-year bond and the blue is?
The blue is twenty. So I think if we want to kind of more compare.
That's what I'm talking about. Can we, can we look at those as, so basically make orange and blue both twenty-year?
Level principal.
Level principal.
Okay, so that's what they are now.
So you're talking?
Tell me what the letters are, should be across the top.
So I'm looking mainly at columns O and Q now. So if I look at columns O, that first year, which again is just interest on a three hundred thousand dollar house, if it is a single bond, it'd be two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And if it is a multiple bond, thirteen dollars and thirty-four cents. But again, that's not the year I would want to focus on.
The next year. Not even the next year.
Not even the next year. So if you go down to fiscal year twenty-seven, this is where
The construction loan hits.
Construction loan hits. And now you're starting to have a little bit more money that's going to go towards the multiple bonds because you have all three of your multiple bonds going.
Right.
So it'd be six hundred and eighty-one dollars for a single bond, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars for a multiple bond.
But if you go down to twenty thirty-two, it shifts back.
It shifts back.
So that's when the different bonds become a lesser monthly payment for folks than the.
And I mean, take, take the high, which year looks like the highest delta between the two in, in, in favor of the
Single?
Blue, or in favor of the orange?
Well, I, I mean, I'd look almost at the year where the blue is the most.
So the eight ninety fifty-one versus six sixty-nine, so eight ninety fifty-one minus, was it six sixty-nine? Six sixty-nine, point oh nine. So that's two twenty-one forty-two for the year, right? That's, that's the annual tax impact, right?
So.
So that's, so that's eighteen dollars a month difference. Eighteen dollars a month more, but that, that's, these are the numbers that I needed to look at because to me, the overall interest savings there for eighteen dollars a month more on a three hundred thousand dollar house, I think that that's, you know, if we were talking two hundred dollars a month more, that, that becomes a much bigger consideration for me as to whether it makes the most sense for the current taxpayers to be spreading that out over more people over a long period of time.
From what this is showing, there is twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Where it flips.
Thirty, thirty, so there's six years
Right.
approximately where the monthly payment is less on the single bond as compared to the multiple bonds. But thereafter, it starts out being just the multiple bonds.
Well, because as you pay more principal, your interest is going to, your interest is going to drop.
So if this is a twenty-year bond, of the twenty years, six of them, it is more expensive to pay the multiple year bond, but the other fourteen, there is less of an impact monthly. Am I saying that correctly?
Right.
Saying that correctly.
So, I mean, so that, so that reiterates the point that the multiple bond probably makes sense. But let's look at now, so let's just take that eight ninety fifty-one, which is the largest number that I'm seeing in those first few years.
So the eight ninety fifty-one also comes the year that we'd be paying back that single note of four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, which again, the goal would be to use the twenty percent building aid to pay that back. So that bump up of four fifty-seven really shouldn't, we don't predict that to be a bump up of four fifty-seven. But as we look to be conservative and almost give worst-case scenario, this is where that would be.
So, but this is the twenty-year level principal, right?
Can I?
This is the thirty-year level principal.
Oh, it's thirty?
Can I just check Haiti for a second?
Yeah.
I'm counting four years that it's more expensive on the, on the multiple bond. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty. If you compare those, and then it dips back below.
Yeah, I do see that.
Yeah, you're right. It's four. So it's sixteen fourteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but in what year, if I'm, again, correct me, if I am not summarizing this correctly, the numbers here do not reflect the building aid coming in that would pay off the first of the multiple loans. So there wouldn't be that increased payment, is that correct?
It does not reflect the twenty percent of, the final twenty percent.
Okay.
But each of these numbers reflect the eighty percent.
Got it, okay.
The first eighty percent we got, though, we can't use, we can't pay this, we can't prepay the bonds, correct?
No, so the eighty percent so isn't going towards any of the bonds at all. It's going towards the construction of the building. So in any scenario, it's going towards that.
So can you change that to a thirty-year level payment?
Thirty year for both of them?
Yeah, I mean, I don't really care so much about the, the single bond option, but.
All right.
Okay, so now twenty twenty-eight, that number went down to seven seventy-three sixty-one. Seven seventy-three sixty-one.
And the other number went up, right? Or that's slightly down, down, five forty-eight sixty-eight.
All right. And then can you now do a twenty-year level principal? So I'm just looking at twenty twenty-eight because that was the highest number. So this is the level principal?
Yeah.
So that's.
Nine eighty-four to seven seventy-eighty-eight.
Eighty-four, thirteen, and then now twenty-year level payment. Eight seventy-six oh four. Okay.
Six sixty-three eighty-seven. If you're looking at the difference, though.
Yeah, so, 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 so here's what I'm, so here's what I'm looking at, right? The, the biggest delta on a three hundred thousand dollar assessment, which we can play with any of these, but hopefully it's somewhat representative. Twenty-year level principal, they're looking at nine eighty-four thirteen is the highest of the four options, right? Twenty-year level principal. And that's the one that's going to pay down the principal fastest. The lowest of the options would be a thirty-year level payment, which is seven seventy-three sixty-one. So minus seven seventy-three sixty-one. So the difference between the highest and the lowest options is two hundred and ten dollars and fifty-two cents per year. And that's seventeen dollars and fifty-four cents a month. So to me, that supports that doing the, I think that that makes a good argument for a twenty-year level principal, to be honest with you.
Hundred percent. GMO is the way to go.
Which is going to provide the maximum savings.
Thank you. I was thinking the same thing. Relabel it. Thank you. I was thinking the same thing. Relabel it.
I think my GMO is different than your GMO. No, I think, I think that's exactly, that's exactly correct. I mean, again, I look at these numbers and they're, they're obviously still large.
Well, I mean, they're large no matter how you slice it, right? Um, and fully appreciative and sensitive to that, but if we're looking at total tax impact and value to the taxpayer.
Absolutely.
Level principal, GMO, according to this bond option, all the card option, if you will, is, is, is the right way to do this. Absolutely. And I think, uh, you know, a couple things that we can't factor in, but are good hopes for the future are that uh, number one, the, the total town valuation will hopefully increase over time. It will increase over time. It will increase over time.
Although it did go down last year for the first time ever.
Yeah, but I do think that with the number of development projects that have been happening, you know, and hopefully, uh, hopefully at some point we'll get the air of the planning department, planning board and, and get some, a little bit more commercial in here to help offset some of that stuff. Um, and then the other factor that we can't factor into this is, is that in ten years, if there are better bond rates, we can you know, these may be refinanced down even lower.
You know, how do we communicate that clearly?
Well, and now it's.
It took, it took us forty minutes to communicate.
First things first, Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to move forward with the multi-bond options. Uh, and specifically a level principal and bond options GMO as presented this evening. Which are twenty-year. Which are level principal, five years for G, twenty years for M, ten years for O.
I'll second that motion. More questions, more comments. We've been having really good discussion on this so far, but I don't know if there's any other questions.
Just wanna go back to the initial comment I made at the start here, like in playing with the models. Mr. Tom, thank you very much. Super.
Huge, thank you.
Super helpful to, to present it this way, and thank you to your kids. Right, um, and again, just to reiterate, in comparisons to the options that the board has been reviewing this evening and looking at thirty-year options, which again, we've been talking about, by taking the multiple bond approach, uh, it's resulting in an interest projection of savings of close to eleven million dollars, right? While it's.
Is, is that? No, cuz that's the difference is the one point one. Because that's the twenty, E is the twenty.
I'm presenting the A.
Yeah, you're presenting.
I'm presenting the A based upon what the board was initially talking about.
All right.
Right, right. So this is the model, this is the scenario I'm talking about, right?
Yeah.
Because this board was considering thirty years, we've been talking about it, leveling it out longer, reducing payments, right? That does not make financial sense. It doesn't make sense to pay this much more money in interest with the small impact it has on taxes on a per-month basis, as Mr. Schumaker has reported. So, uh, in my mind, this is very clearly the right way to go for, for the options. Now, we're gonna have to sell it deliberative.
Yeah.
Right, because again, as we're all now of the full understanding, it won't be as transparent to the taxpayers taking this approach, so.
But it could be, I mean.
It could be in the voter guide. It should be in the voter guide.
Exactly, this table should be in the voter guide. But they're not gonna be able to plug it. Well, unless the voter guide could be electronic.
We can make this available to them.
Yeah.
Well, I was gonna wait to make this comment to schoolwork comments, but, um, I wanted to thank Mr. Oblennis because Mr. Oblennis has done a considerable amount of work with us. He jumped in at a pretty late stage. Did, I can't even imagine how many hours of work.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, I, I, I don't wanna encourage people to only bring your comments to public forums cuz we don't read and watch every public forum, but I did watch Mr. Oblennis on, um, Latcha's show. And I felt like he has taken all of the information that he has gleaned over the, the course of our conversations and presented it in a very, very, very concise, uh, clear way. Uh, I, I can't express my gratitude to him enough for, for doing that because it really was incredible. Um, but I think that the way that he explained a lot of his rationale made a lot of sense. Um, and so I plan to re-watch that, and I think that we should re-watch that, uh, to, and, and have the discussion with him too for the voter guide cuz it was, it was good information.
Now, we had discussed in our, on our last FIC meeting, um, having a community forum at EMS um, as kind of a preliminary explanation info session, um, before deliberative. And I think that is an important, an important step to, to help people get even more information and, and, you know. But I, but nothing has really gone out about that yet. I'm not sure where we are in, in planning that evening. Okay, well, we have a vote and then we have, uh, we have a motion in a second right now. We're in the middle of a motion. Yeah, I, we have some, we can work on marketing PR and all the community forums and all that in a second. But we have a motion in a second. Any other questions on the motion in the second? Hearing none, all those in favor, and I'm just gonna summarize by saying using GMO, um, but it was obviously a lot more complicated of a motion than that. Um, for our multiple bond, uh, for construction of a new elementary school, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, passes five zero zero. Now, let's chat community forum. Yeah. Doug, are your kids available? Can they do the community forum? Let's get Nemo and Dory and, and Gil back in here. No, I mean, I think, I, I do wanna have something. I just don't know if the twenty-fourth is the right date for it. I think there's, if I remember from Mr. Mitchell's presentation, there's a math and literacy night at GMS. There's.
The twenty-fourth is in next week?
Yeah, I don't know that we're gonna be able to pull this together.
Twenty-four.
No, I don't think so either.
I, I, we, we need to spend some time actually compiling the information. I, I, I mean, I think I'd even like to have it somewhat vetted by others to just take a look at it. Um.
Yeah.
I, I'd like to be able to go to something like that with something that's well thought out so that that way we can get feedback at that and then refine one more time.
Well, and also have it recorded so it can be played by multiple times by people at home who aren't either able to make it or that are looking for further explanation as to the reasoning behind some of the decision-making and the way that it's written and proposed. How's the thirty-first?
I do also think that we should take, um, we should take the presentation that Kyle did at the last facilities meeting where he went through the def- the deficiency stuff. Um, I think Mr. Oblennis pointed out that there was a lot of, a lot of really impactful information that ultimately swayed his decision in the opposite direction from what he was expecting. Um, and I would like to find a way to compile that into something that's a little bit easier to understand for the voters, just to help, uh, understand those things, cuz.
Are you saying for the forum or deliberative?
For the, well, I think for the, for the forum, it probably would be worth doing. I think the more times that we have opportunity to present that and answer questions, the better.
I also think we need to, well, I guess my question is, and I wrote it down, what is the deadline for the voter guide? When does that need to be done? When does that get mailed? We usually collaborate with town on that, I believe.
So, um. Well, she didn't do it last year because she was gone. So I think Doug and I did the voter guide last year, didn't we?
Think so, yeah.
We haven't started the voter guide yet, but we need to, um.
I'm just curious when it's due because I think a lot of the information we're gonna put in there, the board's gonna need to see. We're gonna need to make sure it's.
So I think you wanna back plan if you want that in people's hands by, and it's gotta be early enough for the town side, right? So they're going a week before us.
Yeah.
Um, I'm pretty sure we have to have it finalized by February vacation. So that we can have it printed and ready to deliver to the, um, post office.
Before the vote. So that doesn't go out before deliberative?
The voter guide goes out before deliberative, doesn't it? Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It doesn't go out, no, it doesn't go out before deliberative. It goes out before the vote. That's right.
But we can have, we can have handouts and, and other information available for the forum and for deliberative. We've done that.
And that could be work product that's leading up to.
Right. Dan has a little panic. No? What are we thinking for a date for the community forum? We do have a fifth meeting this month on the thirty-first, but again, we we're rubbing up against finding Nemo, we're rubbing up against, I mean, not that I necessarily think those are the people that we are need to convince, but I think we need to be mindful of when we're trying to schedule this.
I, I would suggest at this point, for what it's worth, I think the community forum should happen after deliberative cuz that's where a lot of the questions are gonna be put into the public space and then that community forum can be spent answering those questions and we can target it towards what comes up at deliberative session.
The only pushback I would have.
It's just an idea.
Yeah. The only pushback I would have on that is that deliberative can get pretty messy. And I, and what I've found in the conversations that I've been having is that despite all of the meetings we have and all the information we put out there, there are still so many questions and so many people that are not understanding things, and I, I think that we have an opportunity to have deliberative be more productive if we can get more information out ahead of time. Um, what I'm finding is, uh, tr- a turn towards people actually participating more in the conversations that we're having.
It act, it's funny cuz our, our logic train is exactly the same, but it's two different conclusions. My logic train is, we've had these community forums, they've been very low attendance.
Yeah.
It doesn't get out there, a- as opposed to deliberative session. They get messy. It's not, it's not the Litchfield thing. That's, that deliberative sessions kind of get messy, but now we may actually get enough enthusiasm for the deliberative session to actually have a conversation at once.
It's an interesting idea.
Saying this is ideal. But, and I don't even know how we would really make it work very well. But it, the town and the school are going on two different deliberative dates, right? Why can't we have deliberative at GMS?
Does it have to be a voting?
Which are deliberative at GMS? Why can't we? It's not. So I think the location, this is in.
Do we post anything to the location yet?
We haven't yet, but you, you got me caught up on who sets the location of deliberative.
Also, just a side note, um, Courtney's freaking out a little bit about deliberative on the third because that's Nemo. But that's the town. Well, I know, right, but while we're considering location, that's just.
I, so I'm trying to remember in, in.
School deliberative is the tenth.
Who's, who selects the location.
But the town is.
But the town's not gonna move where they're deliberative.
Right.
No, the, the town is at, the, 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 the showing.
It's gonna be okay?
I think technologically, it's easier to do at CHS, right? It's a bigger room, they've got all this stuff.
Yeah, I, I appreciate all that. I'm just trying to think. I like, I like where your head's at. You know what I mean? If, if there's significant questions or if there's, if that's an opportunity for townspeople not only to participate in deliberative, but also to see it.
They stay long because it's comfortable, it won't last long.
Anyway.
I, I'd have to check that there are statutes that indicate who makes that decision. I just don't know on this one. Um, I, I think it might be you. I think you picked the date, right? And I think you picked the location. So I, I, I'm gonna have to double check.
We just have to be really clear with the voter.
It's a governing board decision.
They're not used to that.
Can we verify that?
Yep.
You go.
So the first thing we would post would go back to that, to January twenty-ninth. So us, and cuz we post the warrant and on that is.
Oh, right.
Believe we're deliberatives?
Yeah, the location.
Yeah, location, yeah.
I, so going back to Dan's point, um, I tend to feel pretty strongly about holding it before deliberative. Because I've been, my feeling, my gut feeling has been that the trend is trending towards getting smaller pockets of support from people who are actually consuming the information and, and, and reading the information. Um, you know, we've presented things a million times, but, you know, Mr. Oblennis has come out and done a whole nother analysis. He's come to the same conclusion, and I felt like that was a turning point for me because we as a school board have been accused of being dogs with a bone trying to get a new school, when that really isn't the case. We've just been trying to solve a problem. And it was really encouraging to hear someone else do an independent analysis, come to that same conclusion, and I think if we can have the more opportunities we have leading up to these big town events, I think the better off we are.
What if we, and I'm throwing out, we're throwing out ideas at this point, right? What if we did some type of online, um, recording or some type of presentation that can be available online ahead of deliberative, and then a community forum to answer questions after deliberative? So something where we sit and go through Kyle, or Kyle goes through his points that he gave in terms of you know, the deficiencies and whatnot, and then we sit and we go through the analysis with the TV showing and putting in the bond question. I, I don't know. I don't know how this works. I'm, again, I'm just kinda thinking out loud, but.
It's actually a really good idea because it gives us the opportunity to put something together that's comprehensive, that people can continue to revert back to.
My only question is the timing of that before deliberative, are we gonna wanna do a second one to answer questions that come after deliberative?
Well, we may, we, we may wanna do, I think what you're saying is.
Q and A.
Right, do, do the forum after the fact so you can, cuz that doesn't allow us to answer the questions, but then that kinda, that kinda appeases both me and Dan's comments, which is, you know, it, it does help get more information out there ahead of time so that deliberative might be a little more focused, probably not, but, um, yeah.
Well, we could break it down too. I mean, LCTV is really good about labeling sections of videos. I think we can do the same thing to say, this is the part about, from the architect and about the building and about the deficiencies. And this is the part about the cost and, and how we arrived at the certain figures. This is the part about building aid. This is the part about bonding, and that way people have a place to go for information. But we, you know, are we ready to do that and record that in the next two weeks, I guess is my question.
It's gonna be a lot of work, but.
Not necessarily. I think if you approached, uh, LCTV, said we want a, a new special, we wanna have a special, and you take sort of what John Latcha has done. He goes back and says, watch this clip. You have it all. It's at the FIC meeting, it's at tonight's meeting, it's at, so what you're doing is just pointing back. You're somebody sort of narrating this and is saying, you know, on this date, here's what we did, and here's the answer to this. You sort of tell the story because we've already told the story, but you piece it together into a, into a special show.
I think we, we really need to piece it together.
And I don't think it's that hard to do. It all exists. It's all on the servers. It's just a matter of sitting with the folks from LCTV and saying, can we piece this together now? And now you've got that one special that can air. Um, cuz you have access to, it's public TV. You have the same access as anybody in town. So to piece that together and put that on as a special, using information that's already out there, it's not. We have to just write down, we wanna show this, this clip, this timing, right?
But we do wanna create a couple visuals that like summarize.
With some new visuals that, that help to summarize.
Mailers, we need flyers, we need to have an impact. That's, but in terms of you know, again, not, not persuasive necessarily, but informative because the goal is to get the information out.
I think one of the great ideas that is really stemming from the middle school. Hi, welcome. Right, they, they've put together a couple of videos over the past year or so, right? And with students.
Yeah.
Day in the life of, right? Those have been pretty impactful in my eyes. I don't know if there's an opportunity here to do that at GMS as well.
There is.
Well, I, I can.
I can bang them out in a death.
Perfect.
I was gonna make a comment direct here also, thinking of consumption time, and I'm sorry to come out from the audience, so we do the census, don't? But TikTok length, like.
Yeah.
People are not gonna watch a twenty-five-minute video, even though they want the information. They want that quick snippet of knowledge that's gonna show them, here's how it impacts me, here's what it says, and.
Well, we could, we could start the whole video with a, with a summary, right? Like, here's what we're gonna get into. If this is all you watch is the first two and a half minutes, then that's fine. Um, I am hearing so, you know, some of the older voters are actually like listening to all of the information at this point though, which is, I so appreciate it because it's the only way we can get it out.
We had a presentation from a gentleman who, um, is producing, they're, how do I describe these? They're almost like Schoolhouse Rock. They're very simplified videos, cartoonish, um, but they tell a story about a school bond project. And the beauty of this is that the way the guy's marketing it is, any school district can take the same video and update the number and the narratives. Right, so you've got this kind of catchy little thing that you make personal to Litchfield. So it shows Griffin, you know, you just a couple of personalizations, and all of a sudden, it, the work's done. The cost is minimal and it's something we can latch on to. So this, there are things that are available to us. One more thing playing that tells that story in under three minutes. That's the whole point of it. Tell the story in under three minutes.
Does Peter have to sing in the video or?
Oh, good God, you don't want that.
I'll do choreography. But, so for, for today's purpose, do we have some type of consensus that we wanna do some type of informational, oh, electronic? Some type of before deliberative, and then after is when we'd be looking to do more of a community forum to answer questions?
Yep.
All right, so, um, nobody wants to come on Valentine's Day though, right? Because that's, we have meetings the seventh.
What, what are you looking for, the, um?
Deliberative's the tenth, so do we wanna have the?
When do we have a facilities meeting again?
Fourteenth, which is Valentine's Day. I'm just thinking, that's not the best day for.
So I'm confused, Heidi, because our deliberative is on the tenth, so if we're gonna have a video out, we have to send it out like within the next week.
Two weeks, yeah.
And then have that community forum.
After deliberative is what we're saying.
You meant immediately after.
No, no.
No, no, not immediately after.
No, no, like we, that way we have deliberative and we're able to answer and hear questions that come up during deliberative. And then be able to have a community forum afterwards.
Okay, that makes, that makes a lot more sense.
And again, I was only looking at Wednesdays just because that tends to be our community forum days, but. With February vacation, our meetings being the seventh and the twenty first and then the fourteenth, um. You know, we may need to pick a different day, so I, we don't have to do that right now from here.
February vacation is the last week of February, so uh twenty six.
In terms of pulling the information together though, I mean, that theoretically would have been a good thing to task the facilities committee with.
Yeah, but Oscar, Oscar has been at every single one of those meetings too, so I bet he can, I he, you know, I bet he can find. The clips a lot faster than we could even do.
Yeah, I do think though it might be worth emailing Mr. Oblenis because. He has been really good at highlighting what information has been hard to find, so he might have some good ideas as to like what. Certain points he would like to see in there too.
Sounds good.
Alright, so it, I don't wanna put more work on either of your plates, but are facilities committee willing to take the lead on this video?
You mean, I mean Tina?
And Dan.
I think somebody's gotta storyboard it out.
Yeah, yeah, I think maybe we could set up a meeting at the elementary school with Dan.
I'm more than happy to help, but I just would rather have a point person who's putting together a background.
We have to, yeah, we have to.
We can do it.
You know, obviously been in and out of the facility, know it the most.
We're already in the trenches, so.
Yeah, okay.
Next week maybe, we have a conference.
We don't have, do we have a meeting next week? Uh, for facilities, I don't think we do.
That got canceled, we're be, are you talking?
Still you've got canceled?
No, no, no.
Okay, the other one did?
The other one did, yeah.
But either way, I think what we're talking about is a meeting with, uh, with you, Dan, separately, so.
Alright.
Right, not lying?
So that I'm here lying?
I'm lying, okay. Well, we can talk about that after, okay. Um, okay, so we still technically are in the middle of the business and operations report.
So just, before we leave this.
But I I don't wanna leave it, I just wanna bring us back to where we are.
We're going fast and furious, so I'm I'm jotted down, like a video should launch by February fifth, which would allow a week's worth of viewing, right? Out in the social media sphere, et cetera, so just a target date. And then when are you targeting the community forum? Are you looking after February vacation, so? Um, you know, like March sixth, so you're a week from the polls, so it's really a, let's. Answer the the questions one last time, or are you trying to do it before February vacation?
I think, I think the right, the week before.
Before, yeah.
Week before, so.
Yeah.
See, I think we would be better served to do it closer to the deliberative.
You think so?
I think you're gonna, one, people are gonna go on vacation and forget half of what they heard. And it might just be too close.
I guess, yeah, I mean, either way.
That's not to say that we only have one, we have one that can be Q and A, two for the purpose of answering questions, but maybe we have something else at Griffin, an open house. That with a board member that's sitting there and able to answer, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be only one community forum, I mean. You know, it can be a different format, I guess. I see your point, I mean, people go on vacation and lose the information, um. We can come up, we'll come up with a date, why don't we circulate, i- is everyone okay circulating dates offline or online? Just to, for the purpose of not sitting here with calendars right this minute?
Yeah, cuz Tina and I have a pack of a lot of work to do, coming up anyway, so.
Okay.
And Dan.
Absolutely, yeah, cuz we need all the Griffin dates, which you know.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so. We're on business and operations, we've gone through the monthly.
Good place to be, yeah, so.
Um, are there, is there anything else that we wanna tie up with respect to? I mean, we are, we do have the new elementary school still under old business, so there is more room to have conversations later, but.
With the warrant under old business too, so we can vote on that then. Um, so not in the report, but underneath in the school board agenda. Is if we wanna have a discussion about reserve funds and purpose of them as we've been asked different questions.
Yeah.
Um. I think it's a really important discussion, I don't know that that's critical path for tonight though.
I was wondering if we wanna have that tonight too, because things have been longer in other parts tonight, so we could.
Yeah. Um, my thought would be if the board is comfortable with it, that we postpone that till our February first meeting.
Agree, I mean, we've already voted on the articles for March and the budget committee has already moved on those articles. Which is why I'm saying it's not critical path at this moment, but it is certainly important to have that direction.
And and the reason I put it on this meeting is that the budget committee poked at this and.
They did, yeah.
And we were like, oh, we haven't had that conversation, so as long as the board is comfortable just post- postponing that, just.
I think as long as we have it before deliberative.
There are people poking at it.
Yeah.
So February first is before deliberative, so it, if you're comfortable doing that, I'll just move to agenda.
Board consensus, everyone's good with bumping that to the first, okay. Any other questions under the business and operations umbrella for tonight?
Do you mean February seventh?
Whatever date it was, yeah, first week of February, yeah, yeah, you're right, it'd be February seventh.
Cuz that's when I invited Alejandro.
Um, hearing no other questions, we will jump into public minutes.
Make a motion to approve the public minutes from January third?
Or second?
Motion and a second, questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the public minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, passes five zero zero, sliding into new business with policies. I'm gonna turn it over to Andrew, I wasn't able to make the last meeting, um, so I'll, and Dr. Jettie, I can go for you, we're there.
So there's two policies being presented as a first read to the board tonight, uh, both on weapons on school property. First policy, J I C I is weapons on school property specifically for students. And then G I C I uh is weapons on school property for employees. Note that G I C I is actually not an NHSBA policy. But uh we did feel it was important to have a policy, kind of in that same kind of naming convention, numbering convention, whatever you wanna call it. Uh, specifically that addresses weapons and employees. Dr. Jettie, anything else to add?
That's correct, and then K I C I is for the public. And basically what we realized is that J I C I, which is in the student portion of the policy manual. Contained reference to employees and contained reference to the public. And we're like, how would somebody know to find it there, right, so we just decided to replicate the policy, minimize. Take out the student specific portions relative to Safe Schools Act. Um, but to state that we don't expect our employees or our public attending to have weapons on school property.
Do we wanna clarify in these policies, um, cuz we had a conversation about law enforcement. Um, and I see that you have weapons under control of law enforcement personnel, do we wanna uh clarify whether on duty or off duty?
That would be the board's pleasure, I think, uh.
I think we had a conversation about that and we we kinda talked about, well, if they're on duty, but I I think my opinion was, I don't care whether they're on duty or off duty. They're trained law enforcement, I would prefer that they be able to carry at any point. Because they are trained first responders in in that critical capacity.
We left it vague in there because the feeling is that it doesn't carve out only when on duty. So therefore, our sense was that it covered, look, you're a certified officer.
I just err on the side of someone questioning it, like, you know, cuz we had that conversation and said, well, what if they're not, what if they're not on duty, right? So if we spell it out, then it's, it's clear.
Yep. Are you, uh, you know, again, not a rush on this, so if you wanna send this back to policy, we can make that clarification, if that's the.
Or if there's revised language, this is a first reading, right, so if there's revised language and you can comment what that revised language is, the policy.
I can comment on that, um, would I motion this for a second read with the following revisions, is that how you?
Well, you approve it for a first reading and then at our next meeting for second reading, we'd. We'd look at your comment and then make it and vote on it.
Okay.
That simple.
So should I make a comment right now? What's the, what's the order of operations?
We approve it for a first reading.
And 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 you've given feedback for us to revise, so we'll bring it back with that revision included. Um, a- a- again, reading consensus of the board, you would like that clarification.
Not for me, I'm happy the way it's written, honestly. It's it's, it gives, it gives tacit approval for an officer to have their weapon on on school property.
And knowing that we have a lot of officers who live in town but are not employed by the Litchfield Police Department.
That's my interpretation as well, Mr. Plansky, but I'm I'm interested to see what Mr. Schumaker's comment is and the wording to see how it fits in.
I mean, my my wording would be as simple as weapons under control of law enforcement personnel, whether on duty or off duty are permitted. It just, then there's, there's no one that can question that.
Yeah, that's.
I agree with you that I think that the way that it's written, you. You couldn't say to a law enforcement officer, you're not permitted because you're not on duty, right, I agree with that, but I just, you know, we ask the question, I figure in case anyone ever does.
Mike, I might be going back some, but I remember this being a a question, um. The firearms specifically, um, I don't know if it was at a polling place or a public, you know, um.
So the.
There was some kind of, I thought there was some kind of discrepancy between the federal Safe Schools Act and the state law.
So the the issue becomes, uh, when the high school is used as a polling place. Um, it, on that day, it's not a school technically, so when we. So I met with the chief today and I said, okay, let's talk about the election next week because. Um, this is gonna be a highly participatory primary, I would expect. So I brought him down, we talked about the locked doors and the way we kinda secure the gym from the school. Um, and, you know, us, our ability to regulate what happens on the other side, the gym side, the polling place side. Is not the same on that day, and that's just the reality of it, it's a, it's a public polling place.
Right.
And the school grounds out back, I think there would be an argument that there's an extension to that in terms of.
Okay.
Uh, constitutional rights, so it's, um, yeah. So on that day, that is, that is a challenge, however, we we do have the ability to uh restrict. Um, during other times of the year, the board has that ability, yep. We we don't need a bunch of armed citizens at a football game.
I absolutely agree, but I just wanted to make sure that we were.
And you have that ability as the board to put that restriction up.
Okay.
And then one other thing that we had talked about was, you know, and I I I've read it pretty carefully with Kayla and Andrew. Um, but G I C I, you know, there's one clause in there that just catches me, and that is the whole uh pepper spray clause. And I'm really struggling with, um, a member of our staff who has a container of pepper spray in a purse. Or a container of pepper spray in a vehicle. Um, I'm not losing sleep over that, I'm gonna be very honest with you, I think there's a certain amount of. You know, I I I'm gauging the dangerousness of it, right, you're not talking about a fatal. Um, weapon, you're talking about a defensive weapon, um, and. I I'm I'm just struggling, it's there, and that's why we soften the language down below to say you may receive repercussion. Because, you know, I I've no doubt in my mind that there's pepper spray in some faculty members' purse right now.
I mean, should we be, should we be removing, or can we be removing the spray?
Well, so if you look further down, it says employees who violate this policy may be subject to disciplinary action. May is strategic, right, it did say will.
But if you.
But does that soften it for every other weapon listed?
Let's just say, and I mean, we, you know, we as a board, or we have to, you know, as a town, have to hire superintendents that we trust. But if you have a superintendent that's, you know, tasked with enforcing this, right, they may be, like, whose discretion is that? It's the superintendent's ultimately, right?
Absolutely.
Um, and so I I tend to wanna lean towards. Providing due protection, like where where we need to pro- provide definitive protection. I I tend to agree with you, I I think that pepper spray is not lethal. Um, and I think a lot of people carry it for when they're walking to their cars at night, it might be on their keys. Um, and I don't wanna have a teacher who carries pepper spray for protection, take it off their keys to go to school, stop at the grocery store. And get jumped in the parking lot.
So if we remove that, can we change the may be subject to disciplinary action back to will?
I I still like.
I'd still take it as may.
I think you have to have that dis- that discretion for.
Some leeway on what it is.
But I I'm, I'm more inclined, I'm leaning toward just carving out the whole, so. I do not want students to have pepper spray, hear that, Anthony, you should not have pepper spray at the school.
Well, we're not changing J I C I.
Exactly, so it's, it stays in J, but I think faculty, there's just something different about that, and I think people, like I said, we, they. We don't even know that they have it, um, and so, and I'm okay with that, really am.
My sister tried to bring pepper spray on a plane, not allowed there.
Didn't end well, did it?
No.
What about knives, is that a pocket knife? So if a teacher has. I again, if we're talking about defensive inadvertent, in an unintentional, I just.
Yeah.
You just leave that as may.
That, I think the may, I'm comfortable with the may.
I don't wanna change the will.
I see that, yeah.
I'm comfortable with the may covering that, I just think that the the pepper spray is such a definitive issue in my brain that I don't feel super comfortable. Leaving something like that, especially given the fact that it's not lethal.
I I'm thinking, you know, lunch boxes now, and I know somebody has brought a knife in a lunchbox to cut a salad up for crying out loud, right? Uh, and then you think about the crocodile Dundee, that's not a knife, this is, right? So there's, again, that's where the may comes in, right, it allows that discretion.
I wanna know who brings a slingshot.
Dennis the Menace?
I would, okay, so my.
You might ride one to work.
So my comment would be in addition to. In addition to the on duty, off duty, I I would like to see a change to remove the uh, you know, pepper spray.
What about parents or public, I mean, so we're talking about it in terms of J I C I, but is that the same or G I C I for? J I or K I C I?
That's general.
Yeah.
I think you have to pull it out of both.
I do, now, so then, so then the, then the question becomes, because there's, uh, be. Do you almost need to make it permissible at that point, because if you're pulling it out, this is. Using those things for illustrative purposes, but I don't think that it's meant to limit to those weapons, right? Yeah, it it says right here, this this policy, uh, weapon includes but is not limited to. So if you're trying to provide a protection for pepper spray, you would almost need to make it permissive.
Weapon is further defined as any device, instrument, material or substance which is used, attempted to be used or threatened to be used. Is readily capable of causing serious, you know, death or.
So I think if you wanna actually provide the full protection for pepper spray, that, there has to be a permissive statement in there. Which is awkward because it's a.
That I don't know, that I'm less inclined.
I I think, uh, so here's, here's where I'm with that. See if I can make sense with this, so pepper spray that's used in a defensive manner. Versus, I just got so mad at the person who jammed the copier that I pepper spray him, and I I joke when I say that. But you've never been in a room when the copier's jammed, right? And like, that is not the way to solve the problem, and we have to be able to take action on that, so again, I'm back to, again. I I don't know that you want the permissive thing, like now it gives me permission to use pepper spray if, I don't know, I.
I mean, that's assault at that point.
Exactly, exactly.
That's a whole other policy.
Well, it's a good point, Dan.
Weapon is further defined as any device, instrument, material or substance which is used, attempted to be used or threatened to be used is readily. That sentence also is like, I'm having trouble reading that, uh, use, is readily capable of causing. I think is it supposed to be and is readily capable, okay.
So I don't think you have to necessarily make it permissible because you have scissors in schools too, and and those can be used for for harm, um, but. You know, so I I think it's. I like the idea of taking the pepper spray out, I do.
I I personally, yeah, I I don't, you're not, you're not providing, someone could still be cited under this policy for carrying pepper spray. But, I mean.
I think we have to use the best judgment of. The superintendent or the building administrator and put our trust in them to apply it the correct way.
And when it comes to our employees, the association's gonna jump in if they feel that it's an unjust response, so you have a whole level of. Protection and mechanism there, but.
But to be clear, we're only removing the pepper spray from.
Employees.
Employees and the public, not students.
Correct.
Our luck.
Yep, and I will provide the on off duty language for the board to consider it next time, so we'll, we'll take care of both of those.
So for students, just so they wouldn't be allowed to have pepper spray in their vehicle.
Yeah, cuz it says school property.
Is what this is saying.
Correct.
I don't know how I feel about that.
I can't imagine we'd be searching kids' cars for the pepper spray. How you enforce it, but I mean, yeah.
Yeah, I know people that bring it in, their students, that just have it on their keys.
I, I mean, I know it's a slippery slope, but I, it's not lethal.
I will tell you, um.
Have you been pepper sprayed?
Dan says yes.
We had a pepper spray incident in the cafeteria when I was a teacher, so this goes back many moons. Um, but a kid discharged as a joke, as a prank in the cafeteria. And it resulted in several students needing to go to the hospital because of inhalation of it, and then they had respiratory and so forth. So what ended up happening, you know, it started as a joke, went south pretty quickly.
But are there other, are there other policies in which we're going to be able to discipline them on, other than this?
Well, as Dan pointed out, it's a.
If you're trying to get to a long-term suspension, you have to have a policy like this to back that.
Could there be some type of, for students, an exception by the building administrator? So if a written request is made, then pepper spray, you know, for a certain, you know, if somebody has a restraining order or if somebody.
I, I think that's getting into the, into the weeds on it. Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Just right now, for the student policy, it does say you can't have pepper spray in your car. I mean, in your glove compartment or anywhere.
I mean, I also do worry about people's keys, right? I mean, I, you know, my daughter's seven, so she hasn't had pepper spray yet, but.
We have two admin here, but we don't have, Jake isn't here. Can we get feedback on?
I mean, you have students who work till ten o'clock, eleven o'clock at night, walk back to their car.
Right, that's my concern.
Keys, they're trained to use it. Um, and it's for their own self-defense. Not all of them are trained to use, but some of them are trained to use it, and it's for their self-defense.
We have a self-defense class too, I think.
You know, again, if you remove it from the student piece, and it gets used in a defensive manner. I guess you're covered under assault, you're covered under, uh, that, the, that was used in a way that makes it a weapon. Because it was, there was no reason for pepper spray.
I don't think it needs to be in this policy to have act, to be able to take action against students. I mean, maybe task the policy committee with identifying if that were to happen, what policies we would rely on. Um, absent inclusion in this policy.
Is there a, I mean, this language is really lifted from N H S B A. Right? So is there an opportunity just to clarify why this is in here in the first place with N H S B A?
Sure.
You know what I mean?
We can do that.
I, I think that makes sense because it's in here for a reason, and I just wanna know what that reason is before we remove it.
Completeness as to what a weapon is?
Maybe there's an RSA listed next to aerosol spray.
Well, that, yeah, that RSA just defines.
Defines it as a weapon.
What an aerosol spray is. But.
Well, aerosol self-defense sprays, I mean, that seems to be from a larger statute which is defining what weapons are.
So for tonight's purposes, we have a couple of options. We can approve these as a first read, but task the policy committee with investigating. We can also not approve these as a first read because we're not ready to even go there yet until some of our questions are answered. And we'll bring them back for a first read at our next meeting.
Yeah, I would go with that option.
All right, so we're gonna table these policies. Is that consensus of the board? But I think we're, the policy committee and Dr. Jettie, if you can speak with building admin and have that conversation with Mr. Hess. Let's grant them a Mr. Mitchell. I mean, I, I hope this doesn't apply so much to Mr. Mitchell, but, um.
I was just asking, I, I think there's an age restriction on carrying.
Yeah, I agree.
Certain G M S students.
What do you think the age is, Dan?
I don't know if there, I'm not sure if there is an age. There's an age to buy it, but there's not an age to carry, because we, we had a pepper spray thing when I was administrator too, not too long ago.
All right, so we have some questions to investigate.
Purchase and possession, it says in Google.
We're on it. Thank you for that.
Thank you for that.
Eighteen.
So we are now in old business?
One other housekeeping thing, so policy J M, this is the wicked ancient dot matrix policy. That according to the, the nearest we can tell from the records is that this got removed at some point when policy G B E B B and J I C D A A got written. But it never got taken off the website. So even though we're fairly confident that it got deleted, um, it still resided on the website. So I said, for simple housekeeping, we're gonna ask the board to, uh, God, rescind policy J M once and for all, and then we can remove it from the website and be good to go. It, the, the content of J M is covered.
Nineteen eighty-seven?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to rescind policy J M, staff-student relationships.
I will second that. Questions or comments?
Relations, not relationships.
All those in favor of rescinding J M, please say aye. Opposed? Stain, that passes five zero zero.
I think it's an Apple two E dot matrix.
That's the other thing on policy, while we're on the topic and just wrapping up the talk, the topic, if you go to the Litchfield School District site and you go to the policy manual, school board policy manual, you will note that all of our policies, Kayla's been, uh, kind enough to convert them all into Google Drive. As opposed to the old format. This will be far easier over time to manage and make sure that there's relevant updates. That being said, given our initial exercise is now almost a year old. Believe it or not, right? And we've made certainly progress, a lot of progress on the required policies. We now have to do the audit of the Google Drive again. And go through that whole exercise, and then look at really the approach of taking the oldest first and the aging and working back on that. Most of those should be, all of those should be recommended policies, not required policies at this point, and then starting the cycle to refresh those.
Yeah, I think that's our task, right?
Yep. So that's something that I've, I'll own. Um, I don't have a timeline on that quite yet, though.
No worries.
We're good. I think, I think that can be a post-March.
It's gonna take some time to do.
I think it should start in July.
At the very least, post-March, okay? All right, going to old business, so an update on the superintendent's search process. Matt and I will be, uh, in interviews all day tomorrow, um, starting at roughly seven A M, seven thirty A M until eight P M. Well, I'm planning to get there early, but yes.
Thank you both for doing that.
It's gonna be a long day, um, but.
Very important day.
Very important day. Um, so we can get into more details in non-public leader, um, but we're at the point where obviously names are attached and reputations are attached, and so we're not really gonna get into a lot more detail in public. But know that, um, superintendent's search process is doing its job. Um, Anthony's gonna be with us. He gets to miss class, I mean, but he has to hang out with us for twelve hours. Yeah, Anthony will be with us, we'll have.
He's gonna make up that day of school, all right?
I will write you a note, kiddo, no way. Yes, um, it should be excused. So that's the update for superintendent's search process. Now we're back to, um, under old business, the new elementary school. Um, are, is there any other conversations we need to have? We obviously need to approve the warrant article, which I think is more under the annual meeting portion of things. But are there any questions about the new elementary school?
Where are we with the R F P that the board had asked to go out for? Wendy Hill.
Uh, so we've been busy with all this other stuff, so we have draft language that came in from Kyle. This is for the, uh, project, uh.
Clerk of the works.
Clerk of the works, yeah. Project manager, thank you. Um, and so the, uh, we have language that Doug and I have received, but we have not had time to sit down and finalize, so it hasn't gone out yet. Um, on some level, at this point, because we've already engaged David up until, you know, he's been working with us since, I don't even know when. Um, but our intent is to send that out, um, and to do the more formal hiring. You know, when the, uh, bond, or, no, when voter approval comes in March, then we're gonna have to kick into a different level, and our plan would be to have somebody on board there or soon after, so.
There were, um, there were a few things that, um, Mr. Obelens brought up that was gonna be, you know, further investigation for Kyle. Um, that was leading us more of the work that goes towards a guaranteed maximum price, which he was planning on, I think, trying to deliver more of before, um, do you remember what we were talking about before March?
Before March? Civil engineering part of the land.
Just wanna make sure we stay on top of finding out from him what, if anything, he thinks he'll be able to get for additional information prior to March. I know he was gonna be going back and looking at some of that stuff. I'm only looking at you, Doug, because you were there and Mike was not. Staging plan, but there was also some of the, some limited geotechnical questions that he thought might be able to be answered ahead of time.
Yeah, basically, I think fatal flaw, he thought maybe some soil testing, but then we got all that snow, so I don't.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure we stay on top of, there, there was some expectation of additional deliverables prior to the, uh, the vote in March, so.
I, I also wanna go back, because, you know, the, I, I, I know there are test wells that have been taken back in that area, test pits were dug. So we just, I mean, when we looked at Nobis, gosh, what was that, two years ago? I think there were sixty-some-odd wells that were, or pits that were dug, um, on the upper and lower peninsula. So I just wanna look at that again, because there's.
There was some stuff in their report, though, that Mr. Obelens pulled forward, and he's like, you know, like, these things gave me a little pause about.
That was in the Nobis report.
In the Nobis report.
Yeah, so, I mean, and he, he addressed them directly with Kyle, so I know.
Remember when we had Nobis come out and look? Was that?
Oh, so those, those test pits were like, um, a while ago, I mean, like fifteen years ago. They're older pits, but, I mean, you, you still probably would wanna update in case there had been a change in hydrology, but I doubt there'd been that drastic a change, so.
But they, they hadn't been done recently, it was.
And that was shared with, um, I was doing a Keach in Nordstrom. Uh, so that Nobis report has been shared with them, and they've examined it also, so.
The, the end result, though, just to clarify, was that, um, you know, because Mr. Obelens brought up a great point, he's like, you know, typically you'd have, you'd get to the guaranteed maximum price prior to the bond vote, or to the warrant, um, vote. And, you know, ultimately, what we kinda came to the decision on in the conversation of, do we continue to push forward with this or do we wait? Was that you're, the town is gonna pay the same amount of money for the geotechnical regardless of whether it's before or after. We like the idea of waiting to spend that money until after we've heard from the town as to whether they wanna move forward with that. Not to say, you know, ultimately, if this fails in March, we do have to consider, we do have to continue to move forward with some sort of plan, but.
So the board has approved some money towards, uh, civil engineering for, for this year as well. So that, that has been the plan. Things got kinda put off.
Right.
Um, as, as decisions were being made, as we were investigating multiple scenarios. Uh, but there is money for civil engineering to see if there is, or could be like a fatal flaw in that area, so.
Is that the hundred and something thousand that we approved?
A hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
Was there marketing in there, or some type of marketing?
Public relations five thousand.
Yeah, so I think we need to talk about the best way to use that going forward. But postcards, I mean, I don't know what it is, but a mailer or something, but I think we need to talk about, do we hire someone? Is there, you know, someone we could be using? Um, I don't know, but I think that's a, I, Andrew brought that up on the phone, yeah.
Yeah, I remembered that being part of that budget, I just wondered how we can tap into that.
But of that seventy, almost seventy-five thousand is, uh, civil engineering. So it's not an insignificant amount that the board's already set aside.
Any other questions on, related to the new elementary school before we get to the actual warrant article voting?
Well, did we skip over, well, I, I think L M S solar's on here too before we get to the next.
What I was gonna do next, yep. So L M S solar update.
Yeah, so, uh, hang on, because I'm, I'm catching up on emails on all of this too. So I saw an email today that there is communication with Eversource that I felt was positive. Um, so we're in good shape there. I believe we're still waiting to hear from the town, uh, for the issuing of the permit. And I had, had an intention to reach out to the town, that just didn't happen. Uh, but I will do that so that we can figure out exactly where the town is with permits. Doug did a walk with, uh, Jeff Blackwell and Paul.
Yep, from fire department.
So they were able to get up on the roof, take a look, you know, kinda walk through, make sure everybody understood exactly what was there, um, but that was a week ago.
Last Tuesday, I think.
Yeah, we could go yesterday, so, um, so we'll reach back out to the town and see where they are.
Can I go back up a couple, and the, there's the, um, the solar for the new, for G M S, right? That's, that's built, that's.
That's not part of any of our costs.
So are we gonna have some other way to heat and cool the school?
So, so we had a full conversation with Kyle. I was very pointed on this, because I also feel strongly about this piece. Um, and I said to Kyle, you know, we've had a nightmare at the middle school. We cannot hang our hat on this being a solar project, although we are designing towards a high efficiency standard that would permit for that if we do see, at the point, the point at which we're gonna be making the final decision on he, the heating system, we will definitely have good data from the middle school as to whether it makes sense. The building will be designed in such a way that it could have any type of heating system. If it were to be something that leaned towards solar, because it did look like it made sense, um, it would be a dual system. So basically, it'd be a high-efficiency heat pump system that could be dual-fueled, um, with a very minor modification to it, according to Kyle. Now, they haven't engineered the whole heating system yet, that comes much later. But what he said was, we will be able to get a heating system in this building, and it will be the heating system of your choice. You, you aren't gonna be pigeonholed into, uh, solar. So, don't worry.
Is that your question?
It is, because, I mean, L M S has been a bit of a cluster, and we, and, right, it's gonna go, we're still waiting for permits to get the, uh, panels on the roof. Really, it'll be a year from now, if we know.
My initial reaction with this is we need to, A, really prove the, the return on L M S, right? B, we need to have the new skill built and operational, and then the town can make a decision on whether solar is the right investment for it. Using L M S as the financial model. So I, I don't know that, at least if I'm sitting here, I don't know that I'd be supportive of adding G, uh, solar to any new G M S facility until we have more data.
But, but voting yes for the school is not a vote yes for solar, just to be clear. We will, we will as a, we will as a board make a decision based off of the information that's in front of us at the time. And if it, and again, I, I just wanna also, uh, restate the fact that the solar conversation is not about, gee, isn't it nice to be green, like, we are so green. It's lit, the, the, the idea behind it is truly just based off of cost savings. So if we're not seeing, if, if we, at the point that we're deciding heating for the school, are not seeing cost savings, there's no way that we're gonna say, oh, yeah, let's just, you know, because it's nice to be green, cost of taxes is more.
But also, just to be clear, right, I'm expecting significant cost savings just by moving into a new billing.
And that's why I think it, it was the responsible decision to design towards a high-efficiency standard regardless of whether you're gonna do solar. And so that was always the directive, was to design towards a high efficiency. I do believe that there was a, you know, a net zero component to that. But from my perspective, we can design toward that standard and reap the benefits, even if we do find that solar doesn't end up being the right option when the time comes.
I, I think the key for me is that the forty-four million dollar price tag is a fully heated building. Fully ventilated building, all of that's included in there. The how, we can keep having that conversation. And I really appreciate the board keeping, keeping an open mind on L M S. You've already seen significant savings over what you would have paid with oil and electricity and everything else with the P P A going into effect on September, in September.
We've already saved money.
So you've already saved money, but I think you're right, you gotta, it, it's hard to say that we save money when you look up on the roof and there's no solar ray up there. So we, we need to prove this out. It needs to be finalized. People have to understand exactly what it's doing and what it's capable of doing, um, so that we know.
But to, but to answer your question about the actual cost of solar, if that were to become a thing that we say, wow, look, like, this is such incredible cost savings, we should go with solar on this building, um, that would be, that is not, the solar panels are not built into the cost of the project.
But that would be a separate.
That would be, but it would be paid through the P P A, right? So the, we, basically, that's, that cost savings ends up offsetting some of the, the cost of the solar panels. If you make that analysis, but we're not even close to saying that that's the way we're going.
Any other questions on L M S solar? And then we backed up a bit to G M S, but now we're back to L M S solar. Hearing none? All right, moving into the annual meeting. I think we have already gone over our legal timeline and we have our key dates, but we need to. I think we have already gone over our legal timeline and we have our key dates, but we need to, um, talk about the draft warrant for Article One. Is that correct?
That is correct because we are bearing down on our deadline to get this finalized, so.
So if everyone has that pulled up.
Article one and looks like Mr. Totten has updated the amount based upon tonight's vote.
I, I do have a question about that amount. So to raise and appropriate the, the additional sum of fifty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. So that's based off an estimated interest rate. So if we raise and appropriate that and it's more, that it just has to come out of our budget somewhere else, correct?
So.
Because that's the first year interest payment, right?
First year interest.
Which is based off of an interest rate that we don't know until, we can't, that we can't know. Right, we can't know, but we have to pay. So that's based off of a current estimated rate, which is fine because that's the best that we can do and that we'll ever be able to do at any given point. Do we pay, if that number, if that number were to go up, which again, we're not expecting, but you know, hypothetically rates could go up. If that were to go up, would that come from unassigned fund balance or how would that be handled?
I'm not sure because a- anything on here again is, is the estimate because it goes back to things that we don't know about other things too. Um, revenue and X excess, um, fund balance, that's going back, town valuation. So if we come to next September, October, November, when I'm in discussions with DRA and they say, okay, you put fifty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty, what did it end up being? If it ends up being more, I don't know if they, if they're just going to make the tax rate slightly more. Now, I, I think no matter what it is, if we're talking about fifty-three thousand, if it's three percent, four percent or five percent, you, you're not going to go up too much when your basis fifty-three thousand. You're more going to go up, you know, when, when we've talked about over twenty years type of thing. So I, I don't know the answer to that question. I'd have to reach out to DRA and ask.
Well, it's, it's, it's a two-pronged question, right? The DRA component of is how, how is it reported to the taxpayers next year? But the other component is how is it actually paid? And the how it actually paid, it would have to be unassigned fund balance, right? Wouldn't you say, Andrew?
That had to have happened at some point in the past.
But that's not, that's not an estimated tax.
It's a legal requirement that we pay. So if it does go up.
But the legal requirement could be that we pay fifty, if, if the rate went up, let's just say it was fifty-five thousand dollars. You're right, we're not talking about a big number, but we still have to pay that, whatever it is, right?
But I don't know if that just bumps up our allowable appropriations and we just tax more. I mean, I think we could, we'd be able to find a thousand or two in on the fine, unassigned fund balance. So I'm not worried about it. I just don't know if DRA is going to say, okay, it was fifty-three nine fifty. It's fifty-five thousand now, for example, your appropriations are going up and we're going to tax that difference.
They're going to change the tax rate.
I just, I expect that question. I expect that question.
Will they lower the tax impact because it, it's fifty thousand instead of fifty?
And I mean, I don't, you know, I don't care, if it goes down, I don't care, right? Because like people are never going to complain to us that the number went down. I just want to make sure. I, I feel like that rightfully so would be questioned at deliberative because we all have to highlight the fact that we don't know the actual interest rate. So, and this is an interest payment based off of a rate that we don't know.
So I'll reach out to DRA and talk it over with them.
I question if the, if that, if the pay is right. Right, I'm looking at the formula. If I look at the bond estimate formula and where it's pulling the fifty-three nine fifty from. Right, and if I tie it back into the actual formula line itself, it's tying back to now this number.
So this is, this is directly from the bond bank. So this is G, the two point one over five years of level principal. So you can see the only thing that's owed in two, on February fifteenth of twenty-twenty-five is at fifty-three thousand nine fifty. Then we owe money in August of twenty-five, twenty-five, but that's fiscal year twenty-six.
It's the next year.
Yeah, so this is.
So what's this interest of two hundred and fifteen K then that's in the model?
So I don't think it's tiny. That's the total interest.
Got it, that's over the five-year period. Yeah, 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 okay, that makes sense.
So I think that's definitely where we're going to have to do education on it too. Because as we read the warrant article now, it's going to say forty-four million dollar project. You're going to bond thirty-eight million and you're telling me that we're only going to have to raise fifty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty for the first year, which is a tax impact of four cents. Now, that doesn't, that's going to seem like, wow, that's, that's real low, but then again, once they see as we project out that the tax impact in year three, it's not going to be four cents. It's going to be something which they're going to be like, I need, you know, that's, that's.
Your spreadsheet, I think, is what most of the budget committee members would love to see too, and I agree, right? I think, and it was very informative, so I think we can take something like that and, and show people what that actually looks like.
Can we, I just want to confirm, so when we were at the budget hearing last Thursday, the town had tables and they had additional information in their warrant articles. Our understanding from legal is we are not allowed to do that, correct?
It, so, I, I'm a little confused by that because I was watching that on the slideshow. But that's not the warrant, that's a slideshow of the warrant, and I'm just unclear on whether they had that. It was almost like a combination of presentation and warrant, but the actual warrant that gets stuck to the wall, I don't, it can't have those according to our legal.
I think there was a difference, and I think it is part of, I think it is part of, but the difference is this is a bond and the other things are not a bond. I think that's what you said initially.
For the bond, if that's the case, they would have done it for the bond on the fire department.
Yeah, what, what Gordon has said is the warrant, so the warrant that gets, you know, warning the public cannot include the tables.
Twenty-twenty-three warrants, let's see, is there any, any tables there?
So two thousand and eighteen was the last. Fire station.
There was no table, you sent me that one, there was no table.
There was no table for that.
Do you see any tables in the actual warrant?
So twenty-twenty-three, the article twelve.
Talking about financing transactions that are not bond financed. So that, that could be what legal is referring to.
We've talked about this when it comes to the LEA contract and when it comes to the LSSA contract. We wanted to be clear and put more information on.
The last contract that said year one was going to be this, year two was going to be this.
Thirteen of twenty-twenty-two, fire engine lease purchase does have a table.
But that's not a bond, right?
It's not a bond.
But that's for this year. Right, that's the twenty-twenty-three?
No.
Twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-six.
So they put it on, so they put a table on there?
For a non-bond item, so that, so that could be the differentiator is whether it's a bond or not.
But they did have one for not, oh, I see what you're saying.
There, there is one on twenty-twenty-two.
But it's only that one warrant article that has a table.
Because that was a big, it was a big number, it was a couple hundred thousand bucks to set up for the fire engine.
Again, I'm only trying to understand this for.
Because we get into it.
Well, I can ask Gordon what he thinks of that.
Because when there's information and it, a, a, again, the perception is the town's giving us all the information and the school board's hiding the information, and that's not at all what the intent is behind it. And so I just want to be clear that we're getting legal advice that we are not allowed to do that per DRA.
I mean, maybe it's.
From DRA. Rather than necessarily rely on.
Yeah, that's actually a, not a bad idea.
Write it with the, I would write it with the table in it and see if DRA forces you to take it out.
I would contact DRA ahead of time.
I mean, twenty-twenty, there's another table, Article seven.
What was that article?
This is the communications towers.
What is the table? Like, we have a table when we say the cost, you know, sanitarizing or collective bargaining. There's a two-year cost.
They have the payment for each year.
It's an actual.
Not a bond and the law says you have to sanitarize it, right?
The years.
Interesting.
I just want to again ask, can we investigate this?
We could ask, we could get in it, we could get, we could ask DRA is one thing we can do. We can ask Gordon, is he, is he setting a statute? Is this case law? Like, where, where is he?
Just, just to be clear, both Gordon and Ranel have said, no way.
Is it specific to bond only?
Bond counsel has said, you don't do that, and then Gordon has said, you don't do that.
Is that a practice?
Remember, bond counsel is key to this whole thing. They are the one that signs off. No one will loan us money unless bond counsel signs off, and bond counsel also signs off that we're tax exempt, so.
But I don't think, I, I'm not saying like, oh, well, let's just go like spit in their face and do it. I'm just saying, we're getting a lot of pushback on the why, and so I'm fine with trying to answer the why a little more definitively other than saying, council just told us we have to do that, right? So if it's.
My understanding was it was DRA that did not allow it, but it's, but again, I think we need to understand that.
So, and, and make sure that I have the right process down, but once we finalize the language here, last year you put it into DRA, right?
Yeah, so there's, I mean, there's bonds as posted, which, you know, I type up in, in Google, they might use Google, like, you know. Um, but then there's DRA, and DRA, even trying to get lines to line up in DRA, it doesn't work the same. I don't even know if I could get a table in there. I'm trying to just cut and paste the table and it's not working.
Those warrants would have had to go before DRA, right?
I don't know.
Maybe not. So here's what they could have done. They could have put the language into DRA and left the table out.
Oh, I see.
They could have just put the language on the warrant, which DRA wouldn't.
Well, listen, I mean, if we get the answer and we can give them the answer as to the why, right? If we tell them, hey, like you actually violated a law doing that, you know, at least then we have the answer as opposed to saying, yeah, legal.
I think the cleaner thing is for us, honestly, this is an email. We take the town warrant and we say, this is what the town of Litchfield presented as a warrant article. The public's asking us to do the same with a table. Would you permit this? It's that simple. And they may look at that saying, we never approved that. It's a possibility. I'm not trying to call the town out. I'm just saying.
But I do, I do think we need a definitive answer from DRA.
DRA.
My strong preference is that we do a table. And we should.
Understood, but, but let us, let us run that by DRA.
Very least I want an asterisk here that says first year only, you know, or something next to the four cents so that people see voter guide or something that people can say, okay, you're not trying to tell us this is only four cents for the rest of our tax life.
And, and, you know, most of these things are geared, like I just had to talk to the AG's office about a different consumer protection statute, right? And most of these things are geared towards consumer protection. So typically when you're trying to do something that's more informative to the, to the consumer, they are.
So Doug, Doug's looking at the actual ballot and the table that you're referencing is on the ballot. So let us, let us ask that question because again, you are talking two different legal councils, right? The town does not use the firm that we use. But let us, let us ask that question.
That's why I think getting it straight from the DRA.
And, and, and the, the why, I mean, it could be something that's strictly related to bonds, and we know, okay, well, we're looking at something that relates to a bond.
I understand the strategic decision behind not including all the information. I feel like that's incorrect, deceptive, and we want to not.
And it'll, it's going to come up at deliberative.
Absolutely. The information is going to be out there either way, and it should be out there either way. It needs to be transparent. The question is, can we include it on the warrant article? And it sounds like we're going to check the DRA and we'll be able to go from there. My question is, can we approve our articles as written, but then add a table to them later or not? Or are we again, are we at a standstill right now?
No, I think you can approve it as is. You can task us with trying to get the answer. And you have an ability to, um.
When's the final version due?
Posted by the twenty-ninth, but you can modify it after deliberative also. So you could decide after, no, that's only if the public changes it, right?
The number has to change.
Body changes it as session one.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
To approve Article One as written.
You're comfortable with that number now?
I am.
Okay.
We have a first and so we have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions on Article One?
No, this is to not just approve Article One to be on the ballot, this is to recommend.
Correct.
This is the recommendation.
Okay.
Of the school board.
Just wanted to be clear.
Hearing no other questions or comments, all those in favor of, uh, recommending Article One and the language that is contained specifically there, uh, please say aye. Opposed, abstained, that is recommended five zero zero by the school board. So the budget committee will still need to vote on that.
Their vote will be.
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
Their extra meeting. So we have to revote on Article Two as well, um, because that number got changed with, when I sent out that email about the double appropriations for, for the hundred and thirty-five, so it came off of that.
So I'll make a motion to approve and recommend Article Two as written. Questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that passes five zero zero. And then we still need to vote, I think, on Article Seven. That language has been finalized. There was some yellow language on it, but that's been taken care of.
I'll make a motion to recommend Article Seven.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, abstained, that passes five, that is recommended five zero zero. I see more green on Article Nine. Do we need to do something different?
Bear with me a second, uh, Article Eight is good. Article Nine, uh, so I amended that. You voted five zero zero, but remember we had the conversation about, is it the twenty-twenty plan? And I added and amended in November twenty-twenty-nine. Because I don't think it's a new plan. I think it's an amended plan. I, I want to make sure the board is comfortable with the language that we have there. Or you can choose to strike that completely, and you don't have to say it's consistent with the plan. So it's really, what would the board like to do on that one?
There's been some questions about the, and we didn't get into the whole discussion today and I don't think we will, but there's been some questions about eight and nine and, and, you know, the purpose, specifically the purpose of nine, given that we're, we're doing maintenance with eight. I have some feelings about that that we could, we don't have to talk about tonight, but, um, I do think having that language is useful because it at least, it at least gives some footing in the fact that this is based off of a capital improvement plan. It's not like we just decided, hey, and by the way, we're going to throw some money into this, uh, extra plan. And I guess just a brief comment on that, there are other districts that are building schools with far larger amounts of money down from reserves. And I think that that is a responsible thing to be looking towards in the future. Instead of being the town, that always has to raise the full amount from tax dollars, uh, from current tax dollars.
So the stated purpose of that capital improvement expendable trust fund reads, purpose of funding the study, planning and cost of new construction or renovation of existing facilities in the Litchfield School District as recommended by the Capital Planning Committee. So I think that's why it was always linked.
It's existing facilities only?
No.
Yeah, so I mean, so, you know, I think as a town, building up, uh, something like this, you know, it may be thirty or forty years before there's a real benefit to the town, but, you know, being able to have money that's.
Well, we've used, uh, we've used money in this fund too to pay Kyle and for.
Didn't we set a number we wanted to get to?
Challenge will be, right, and I know this is going to be an unpopular comment, but putting the budget committee hat on, the challenge is, is that the school board wants to drain these accounts for other purposes. They want to, they want to monitor the amount of these accounts, so we don't have the opportunity to do that again.
Uh, uh, and I think that's a very fair comment. I, it's an absolutely fair comment because how do you, we, we have to, we are currently not in a position where there's a lot of trust of this board. And so hopefully there's going to come a day where there's, you know, we've established enough goodwill in town that we can help perpetuate some of these plans that can give long-term savings for people in, in long-term planning. But I wholeheartedly understand that, that statement, and there's really no answer to that other than we have to prove that over time.
So the budget committee voted on it with the current wording. And they passed it. I don't know when the vote was, so.
I have to go back and look. I think this one passed.
Seven-two?
Why did I not record a vote?
I have to go back and look.
We don't have any of the budget committees votes recorded on this yet.
Oh, because that was at the. By the way, that went off TV. I didn't get to watch that.
They didn't vote Article One. Operating budget was definitely seven-two.
Which one was six-one-three? That was the support staff, right?
Support staff, yep, was six-one-three.
Hang on one second.
Six-three-one.
Five-three-one.
Five-three-one.
So they didn't do one, Article Two was one. So the problem is, I, I was trying to watch that meeting when they convened after, and I don't know where that went. They, they stopped the feed. Now, maybe it's a separate meeting somewhere that's out there.
It is a separate, he was recording.
Chairman's son's got the, got the.
I think we leave it as is. I think it's clear enough.
So leave it with.
Right, was, as, as it was recommended.
So take the green off.
Well, did the budget committee vote with the unamended or did they not?
They did not, but there was no green there.
They did not. There was no green there when, I don't believe when the budget committee.
Was the, the amount as consistent with the capital plan?
No.
That was, I thought that was there, wasn't it?
I thought that was there.
That was there.
I don't remember. Oh, oh, you added.
The period was after twenty twenty and I'm trying to say, it's really not the twenty twenty plan any longer. It's been changed.
Can I ask another question? Does that same sentence apply to article eight?
Well, no, cause that wasn't capital.
Is not part of the capital plan, is it?
Correct.
Okay.
It's that purpose statement.
Purpose, yeah. Right. It was there, so, it ended in Litchfield in September twenty twenty.
And so what I added after the board voted.
Was amended.
I like, I like what you added, but in the interest of not having the budget committee.
The whole sentence, the whole green sentence was not what the budget committee voted. The whole thing needs to be removed.
Now Peter's saying it, it's on the, it's on the slide from the hearing. It ended at September twenty twenty.
Yeah, the period was after twenty twenty. I added and amended in November twenty-three.
Okay. The school warrant article that is in the slide deck from the budget hearing does not have that sentence.
Really? Cause Peter's got it printed right here.
Mine does.
I'm looking at the version.
That's J D's presentation?
Yeah.
But that wasn't where they voted. They voted in the here, in the budget committee meeting afterwards. So was it read differently?
It is highlighted, by the way.
Geez, I don't know.
Yeah, I, and I know, I know, I know, I know. I, I think we should leave it as is. We have voted on it.
Well, we have to figure out what as is was.
That's article nine?
Yeah.
Weird.
So maybe it's a greater version, earlier version, different version, but it's the one I printed to go to the meeting.
Hmm. Yeah, I don't know. That's not in the slide deck.
So maybe it was taken out at the presentation?
I think we can find out from, from Chairman Sun what the language was that was voted on and we stick with whatever that is.
Actually, they have another meeting. I think I have the minutes. They're draft minutes, but they're minutes.
Yeah. He did read it again, so.
Uh, yep. Let's see. So article four, seven, eight, nine. Article nine in the minute says this amount is consistent with the capital plan adopted by the town of Litchfield in September twenty twenty.
Okay.
Alright, so.
We can keep that language.
That is what is in the minutes.
Okay.
So you want me to.
Take out the amended?
Take out the amended. You've already voted on it that way and I'm gonna take the green off because, okay.
Do you have their votes?
Watch it happen. There we go.
Uh, actually, yes, I do. I do have their votes in the minutes.
See now, it's at the fifteen, it's at the fourteen forty mark of the.
I was just trying to look that up.
What was the vote?
The vote on article nine was six three. The vote, do you want all the votes now?
No, we can do that afterwards.
We'll get those.
Okay.
Yeah. It's quarter nine, we don't need to edit it now.
So we have now officially voted to recommend all of our warrant articles. Um, are there any other questions related to either the annual meeting, key dates, warrants, any of those topics? Hearing done, we'll move into school board comments.
Um, very quickly, uh, Andrew was invited to, uh, speak to the Litchfield veterans about the school budget. Um, I asked if I could tag along. Um, Andrew ended up having a personal issue come up and wasn't able to attend, so I, I met with him on Saturday morning. They're a fantastic group of people. They are really, really awesome. We are so lucky to have them in the town. Um, very welcoming group. Uh, very, you know, a lot, a lot of, uh, or at least a few former educators, um, that are, that are vets. Uh, so really cool. Uh, just a few things I wanted to take back to the board from their meeting. Um, they are super interested in giving back to the town. They have some scholarships, um, and one of their concerns was we don't really get a lot of people that apply for these. So I wanna make sure that we help them get that information into the schools. Um.
I would send that to Val.
Yep. Yeah. Yep. Uh, the other thing is, um, there's a lot of, they do a lot of volunteering and I think that they, um, there's one thing that's really cool that they're trying to do is they're trying to pick up some equipment to help other vets, families that need help with like landscaping and stuff like that. Um, and so there's, I think, for some younger high school students that have some, you know, yeah, it's a really cool opportunity. So I think we really need to try to connect.
Yeah.
The students with the vets a lot more, because they really do have such a vested interest in, um, in our town.
Yeah.
Um, the only other thing that I wanted to, to, um, bring back, they had some really great questions about the school warrant articles. Um, and were generally very positive, even if they didn't feel like they could vote, you know, for their own personal budgets, they were very supportive. Um, one of the questions that they did have was, or that they wanted to bring forward is, you know, unassigned fund balance. You know, we're looking at numbers that go into budgets, like how much of that actually comes back? And one of the ideas that they had, and we may already do this, I'm new to the board, um, was sort of like a, a state of the district towards the end of the school year that could be presented to sort of let people know like, hey, this is, this is how things have gone and how we've spent money and, you know, cause I know we, you know, at this point, we're like, we're only halfway through the year, right? So it's hard to say where things are gonna be. Um, but there's just, you know, the, the only feedback that I got was, you, you have money that goes into an unassigned fund balance. You know, again, we wanna feel confident in voting for the things that you're asking for, but we wanna know that that money, is it actually coming back to the taxpayers if it's not spent? So, uh, great group though.
Yeah.
Really awesome. I was very, uh, pleased to be able to meet with them.
Thank you.
Thank you for going. Um, that might be a good timing in July, beginning, like our meeting in early July. Um, just because at that point, the fiscal year will have closed June thirtieth and we'll have a better understanding of how much is being returned. We've done all our votes at that point. Um, so, but that's a good idea. Because again, it gets out there for us, you know, we gave back four hundred and something thousand last year and I don't feel like a lot of people know that.
Right. So the same tax rate estimate that I used, uh, for, for this meeting, um, I used last year or very, very similar. And then I added on to it. So it kept it open for everybody and then it became the tax rate actual. So it said, okay, here's a column of what we estimated, here's what we actually went forward with type of thing. Um, and it shows, um, so kind of line by line, it shows that. Um, so we, I, I think, I think part of the problem is we have a lot of spreadsheets and so trying to find all, all the spreadsheets is.
I mean, maybe we just do a simple, a simple video that we put out that just, and we can call it a, you know, state of the district, which is, which comes out after each school year, just saying, hey, here's, you know.
Cause there's that spreadsheet, then there's another spreadsheet which goes over line by line, the, uh, board approved encumbrances, um, which a lot of them were safety related that we used end of year fund balance for as well. And again, the, a majority of last year's fund balance, three fifty, got voted into the warrant articles. So that was from the town voting in March of last year. So, yeah. So it kind of start, it started with, how much do we have over revenue and under expensed? And then it started deducting from there as well.
Spoken like a true spreadsheet guy. I think the, these vets, what I got from the vets was, make it easy for us to understand, please, which I agree with.
Me and Peter feel the same way about the spreadsheet.
Any other school board comments for tonight? Uh, hearing done, the manifest headed that way.
Signed it. It's all signed.
Okay. Excellent. Um, community input, we totally missed it at eight o'clock, but I made sure our one community member who was here didn't have anything to say before they left. Um, is there anyone here that would like to speak? Hearing done, we will, um, I'll entertain a motion to go into non-public session.
Thank you.
Moved and.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. Alright, and our, uh, we are going into non-public session pursuant to RSA ninety-one, uh, dash A colon three for the dismissal promotion or compensation of any public employee or the disciplining of such employee or the investigation of any charges against him unless the employee affected one has the right to a meeting and two requests that the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted. B, the hiring of any person as a public employee. C, matters which if discussed in public would likely adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the body or agency itself, unless such person requests an open meeting. And then D through I, please see the citation. For tonight's purposes, we are going into non-public session um, to discuss, uh, C, matters which if discussed in public would likely adversely affect, um, and I believe that's correct as I'm looking down the agenda. So, um, that is the reason that we are heading in. Um, if anyone, any other thoughts on that? Um, alright, our next meeting will be on February seventh, twenty twenty-four. In the meantime, please be on the lookout for a potential video. Uh, a reminder that our deliberative session is on, uh, February tenth at ten A M. Apparently location to be investigated, um, and.
Been discussed.
Uh, and reported out. Um, and thank you for watching the meeting tonight. And as always, please let us know if you have any questions. You can email the full school board or you can email us individually. Thanks very much.